I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Bongio.
Here.
Commissioner McHaver is not here, so Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask the Director if there's been any modifications to tonight's agenda?
We have no modifications. There are some supplementals that are on the dais.
Thank you. Well, it looks like we've got a packed house again tonight, and we've got a lot of information to get through tonight. So, the next item on the agenda is public comments for items that are not on the agenda tonight, and because I think of what we're going to have to follow through with tonight, I'm going to limit that to one minute. So, anyone wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight, you have one minute, and please approach the podium. Thank you.
Ken Swawski, I want to take a little bit of my minute to thank Chairman Robert Morris. He's cordial to the public. He's not rude when it's time for us to speak, whereas in the supervisor's chambers lately we've had a problem with that, and I wanted to thank you for being considerate and not cutting people off and saying, "Please bring your thing to a close," or "Please wind it down." That's greatly appreciated. I attended the Zoni administrators meeting today, and I wanted to give an example of something that was brought forward there, which I've requested be brought to you, and on a continuance till the 5th of December, I've requested be brought to you, and there's quite some obvious reasons on this that I've handed out to you for that to be, and attached to the back, of course, is something which you already have in your packet, I just wanted to underline for later in the meeting. So, hopefully in the future, I will be having a little time to talk to you about these two projects if they're brought to you. It's an interesting one.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight and that are within the purview of this commission, which are land use decisions? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'm Mary Sanger with 350 Humboldt. I would like to point out that it's important that these proceedings, it is important these proceedings proceed in an atmosphere of tolerance and mutual respect. In the last two hearings, this has not always been the case. At times during those meetings, people in the public spaces outside of the chambers, in the overflow room and in the waiting area outside the chamber, have not been able to hear comments due to people applauding or booing. This is a very divisive issue that people on all sides feel strongly about, and with good reason. However, we need to avoid the tendency to demonize people that have a different point of view than we do. We can disagree without demonizing the other. That calls for a mutual respect. I'm not saying deference, I'm saying respect. This atmosphere of mutual respect and intolerance of intimidation is particularly important as the commission begins its deliberations of the staff's recommendations. Thank you. I'm sorry I went over.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close this section of the public comment, and we'll move along. And the next item on the consent agenda, there are two items. Both of these are requested for continuance, so there will be no action on these tonight other than continuance. And so, is there anyone in this audience who's going to object to these two items being continued? Please show a hand. Seeing no one, they'll stay on the consent, and with that, I would entertain a motion on the consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
The motion is to continue items E. On the consent items, there's two of them. One is the M.O. Triangle Group LLC Company, and the Jason Miller Conditional Use Permit. Both those will be continued to the December 5th meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The items are approved for continuance. And with that, we'll move along to the next item, which is the Humboldt Wind LLC Conditional Use Permit, a special permit. And last meeting, there was a significant amount of comment. We had a sign-up sheet, and I was clear that this meeting, there was 32 or 34 people left on the list, I don't recall the exact number, and I was clear that those people would be allowed to speak, and I closed the public comment on the EIR, the FER, and the DEIR, which is the big massive data. So, our first item tonight is, we're going to go through the list of the 32 or 34 people who signed up, and then that will close the public comment on the DEIR and FEIR. There may be additional information coming tonight, and we'll have another public comment on the additional information for tonight. So, with that, I will, Director, did you have someone who's going to help with the speaker? Because what we would like is, I think there's additional staff back there who would like to get these speakers lined up so that there's not a lot of delay in people getting to the microphone, because I think it might be a long night tonight.
What we thought we could do is read from the list, and were you not given a copy of that list?
I have it here, so I can do that.
Okay.
So, I am, I will read the first five, and I would like you to line up and come for the podium. And the first is Barbara Kennedy, Howard Russell, Bonnie Blackberry, Larry Goldberg, Linda Lee. Barbara Kennedy, Howard Russell, Bonnie Blackberry, Larry Goldberg, Linda Lee.
(audio cut off) 20 minutes.
Three minutes. Yep. And this public comment is open for three minutes, and I am going to be fairly strict that the three-minute time is adhered to. So, if the first speaker wants to approach the podium, please.
I'm Howard Russell. I live just outside of Eureka, over by Freshwater. The proposed project doesn't become carbon neutral until after offshore project can begin. The proposed project won't lower our electrical costs or curtail existing plant use. It won't, it will add wires in fire-prone windy areas, and won't help us when PG&E shuts down the grid. It creates a disruptive wall in a vital wildlife corridor. These wild ridges, with their abundant flora and fauna, are our Noah's Ark in the face of the mass extinction already underway. Before making a decision on a project of this scale, you should visit an industrial wind factory, then go to Monument Ridge and visualize the 600-foot towers. There are huge blades and blinking lights visible from all your districts and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Barbara, Bonnie, Larry, or Linda.
My name's Bonnie Blackberry. I was here last week, sitting out in the lobby with probably 50 other people. The whole thing was kind of chaos. I'm sorry that can't come up with a better venue for something of this important. I'm here to voice my opposition to the wind. This wind project, I think wind energy is a great idea, but the location for this, I think causes too much harm to have it there. Some of the things I'm concerned about is the Wiat tribe and their connection to the land, and what would happen to it if this was allowed. Department of Fish and Wildlife said this is unacceptable here in Humble County with the general plan and marijuana ordinance and everything. All these environmental protections have been very, very important, and it seems like this project, we're going to throw those concerns out because we're going to need the power. The light pollution, there's all this stuff of covering up the greenhouses, then this proposal is going to put these red blinking lights up there. I looked on the internet at other wind sites in California, and I didn't see any that were in forested areas. I mean, on the ridge, there's not a forest, but getting to it and for all the utility lines, it's going through mountainous forested areas, which will do a lot of damage and be with the lines and stuff, a fire hazard. Somebody here last time talked about the hydro meteorological impacts that I think you don't really know. Maybe we'll find out that it'll cause great damage to all the forests and life downwind from it. I just really hope that you do the right thing for our county. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Larry Goldberg. I'm a 41-year resident of Trinidad, and I appreciate your taking the time to hear these comments. I passed out some illustrations this time because I have some numbers to share with you that I hope you can all refer to. I'm a member of the Community Advisory Committee for the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I want to share with you that over the last year, the Redwood Coast Energy Authority has spent a year working on projections for our future for the next 20 to 30 years. This is based on a report done 10 years ago that was looking into the future as well, so a lot of thought has gone into this. And what I'd like to point out is that in the power mix being proposed for the next 20 years, in public meetings held to discuss this, the meetings were held from Redway to Orleans, the far majority of people, the vast majority, supported offshore wind, onshore wind, solar, and local projects as our energy mix. In addition, the next graph down, you can see at the current rates of consumption of fossil fuels, we need to reduce dramatically from where we are today. The only way to do that is with renewable energy. We either buy it from the outside, or we produce it ourselves. At the current rates we're going, we are not going to be able to meet our needs strictly with solar. A statistic I'd like to share with you, and I work in the solar industry, if we installed a solar system a day for the next 30 years, no weekends off, no holidays off, we develop 50 megawatts of solar, which is what's being planned in our Redwood Coast Energy Plan. This project will produce over 150 megawatts within a year. So, there is a scale difference that really needs to be considered. In addition, that our targets for the future, if you look at the next page, solar is a component of our mix, but offshore wind, onshore wind, biomass, and small hydro are critical components of our future energy mix. We have to come up with alternatives, or really we're going to have some serious problems. Now, one of the things that I also want to discuss has to do with where the energy goes. All the energy produced from this project will be used where it's needed. It may go over the hill, it may stay locally, it will power 70,000 houses. If we island, PG&E allows islanding, then we can actually use all the power that comes out of this project. In closing, I'd like to make a message for my Wiat brothers and sisters. I want to tell you something that's very important, and I'm speaking from the heart. We are all very proud of what's happened with Tulawat Island in the last month. Giving that land back was a critical thing for our community. I want to point out that land will be underwater in one generation. In one lifetime, that island will disappear. It's time to take a future stand and think of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Barbara or Linda, and the next five that I would like to get prepared to speak would be Robi Tenorio, and I hope I don't butcher these names too bad, Arthur Lang, Linda Lang, Jackie Tiono, Ellen Belts. Robi Tenorio, Arthur Lang, Linda Lang, Jackie Tiono, Ellen Belts, if you could be prepared. And so, either Barbara or Linda.
My name is Linda Lee, and I live in Manila. It's been very interesting during this process to find myself standing on the opposite side from many of my friends who I've been on the same side with, protecting the environment for the 40 years that I've lived in Humboldt County. And so, we all have the same goal in our hearts. We all want to protect the environment, and, but our options are slowly, quickly dwindling as we, as the earth careens towards climate catastrophe, and we're fortunate people if the only compromise we have to make is an altered view shed, or a road being built, or the small sacrifices that we are going to have to make. And the whole world is making those sacrifices. Many people have lost their homes already. So, we don't have the luxury of that we used to have before. I've been to the RCEA meetings where they're talking about repower Humboldt, and it was a little scary for me to hear how much emphasis they're putting on, they had a huge percentage that is being attributed to offshore wind energy, which is a very untried enterprise. It's only been done a couple places in the world. And so, for us to be putting that much of our hopes onto something like that seems a little scary to me. One of the other big things is, oh, we're going to get everybody to start driving electric vehicles. Well, Humboldt County is a truck county. We need our trucks. People live in the country, and a lot of things like that. So, I feel like it's a compromise that we have to make, and so I am totally in favor of the Terre Gen wind project. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Last call for Barbara. Last call for Barbara.
Robi Tenorio was on the list. I car pulled with them last week, and they couldn't come back, but she was opposed to this project.
Thank you. Then we have Arthur Lang, Linda Lang, Jackie Tiono, Ellen Belts. Go ahead, one of you want to speak, approach the podium? Please do so.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to comment. Hi, my name is Ellen Belts. I live in Ferndale, California. I'm not a NIMBY. These will be out my front window, not my back window. I grew up in high-rises in New York City and in Chicago. I lived on the 76th floor of the John Hancock Center, which is that one that tilts back so you can lean down and look all the way down the face of the building, all the way to the sidewalk. You can also look out in the distance from the height, which I called him up and asked him, the apartment was at 620 feet off the ground. You can see all the way to the Mississippi River. You can see all the way to the state of Michigan. It's not an invisible structure. And when I was a kid, my dad always made a habit out of, let's see if we can take a picture of our apartment from. So, I have this whole series of pictures from when I was growing up of, wow, look, we're 45 miles away from the building, we can still see our apartment, because there was a little flashing red light right under that corner, so we could be sure that was ours. So, I have a really good understanding of what the height of these are. I look at that ridge, and I realize that these are one-quarter the size of that ridge. It's massive. And while I realize sea level rise is massive and our need for alternative energy is massive, the scale of this project, which keeps changing from 60 turbines to 47 turbines, at the same time as it powers 38,000 houses, and now with the reduced footprint, it powers 70,000, this document keeps, shall I say, evolving to the point where I, as a reasonable human being who has taught college, I've helped graduate people get their fancy degrees, I am in geology, environmental geology, I cannot read this document and understand reasonably what the end product is going to be. There are three different Gentile alignments. Then in the FEIR, we are told that one of them has moved a mile and a half, but supposedly all the property numbers are the same. This is very difficult for me to understand when you use a ruler on the map and you can't quite come up with this. This is only the tip of the iceberg. Murlet distances got reduced to 50 meters because supposedly this is a high-noise area. Read the document. They put the noise receptors seven meters from the freeway. Well, of course, at seven meters from the freeway, it's going to be high noise, but that's not where the project is. And this kind of inconsistency crops up time after time after time. I read the entire DEIR. I have read every single comment. I have read every single response to comment, and I have read the entire FEIR. I am still totally confused, because it says A on one page and the exact opposite two pages later. In culture, it says 300 workers will be brought in from outside, and not two pages later, it says all 300 workers will be local. It is impossible to make an informed decision regardless of sea level rise with the documents that you have been presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. Arthur Lang, Linda Lang, Jackie Tiono. One of you want to approach the podium, if you're here? Last call for Arthur Lang, Linda Lang, Jackie Tiono, or Barbara Kennedy. Okay, we will assume that those are no-shows. The next five that I would like to get prepared, Laura Corsiglia, Lucinda Adamson, Monty Merrick, Cliff Berkowitz, Pat Kansler. Laura Corsiglia, Lucinda Adamson, Monty Merrick, Cliff Berkowitz, Pat Kansler. Any one of those five here?
My name is Pat Kansler, planning board members. I'm an RN and have worked and lived in Eureka for 11 years, and I stand in solidarity with the Wiat tribe. This should be the end of the discussion. It is Wiat land, and they have studies that prove why they oppose it. Period. End of sentence. For those of you who are racist and don't mind screwing around with the tribes for another 400 years, I would also like to say that when I realized that you were pushing this project, immediately a bright red light flashed in my brain. All right? If you are pushing the project, it's not because you're all warm and fuzzy about climate change, but it is about profit. Profit for the contractors, profit for Terre Gen, but not profit for the people of Humboldt, and not profit for the rate payers. It will benefit PG&E and their grid, but not a Humboldt microgrid. As Blue Lake Rancheria has shown, it was 75% powered by solar, so, excuse me, the gentleman who said solar is not cost-effective and would not supply the needed power is obviously full of shit. Again, profit comes into question. Who is it for? You want to rush this project. It needs more studies done. Environmental, biological, and most fascinating, a gentleman who remarked about the hydro meteorological study and how the drier air would harm our Humboldt redwoods. That's not acceptable. As has been mentioned before about how much our redwoods absorb the carbon. We need clean energy, but rushing into it like we rushed into fossil fuel and their money, it sure made a mess, didn't it? Rushing into things. All right. We need studies. Even the Fish and Wildlife said the area this project is proposed to be on is rated I know from listening to different people that if you, Terre Gen, try to push this project, it's not going to work, for there are people out there who will sue and prevent you from doing much more than sitting on your butt. And I also know that you will find a 66-year-old nurse sitting in a redwood tree you intend to cut down. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Arthur Lang, Linda Lang, Jackie, oh, excuse me, they were no-shows. Laura, Lucinda, Monty, or Cliff. Laura Corsiglia, Lucinda Adamson, Monty Merrick, Cliff Berkowitz. We will assume those are no-shows. Next, if we could have Catherine Bettis, Deborah Dukes, Angelina Lasko, Nicole Byrd, Greg Jasso Roger. Catherine Bettis, Deborah Dukes, Angelina Lasko, Nicole Byrd, Greg Jasso Roger. For one of those to approach the podium, please.
I often ride my bike across Bear River Ridge Road. It's incredibly, incredibly beautiful. I bet most people here, it's just abstract, you haven't actually been there. I also used to ride my bike on Altamont Pass Road through the Altamont Wind Farm in Livermore, and the size of the wind turbines, when you see them in person, is absolutely overwhelming. There's giant swaths of concrete. It's a miserable dead landscape that you just want to leave, and I don't know if, I don't think people get how big they are. So, I'm not an artist, you may laugh, but I have some pictures. Okay, here, I don't know if you can see them either. This is a six-foot tall person. Here's a six-foot tall person next to a 40-foot telephone pole. Telephone poles are big, right? The point is, this isn't telephone poles we're putting up. Here's, this little dot is a six-foot person next to the 40-foot telephone pole, next to 150-foot transmission tower. Transmission towers are huge. We hate them. They're blight. They're kind of scary. Here is a little dot. That's the six-foot tall person. The little tiny sliver is the 40-foot telephone pole. That thing is the transmission tower, and then that is the enormous massive thing. That's how big they are. I've seen them, and the ones in Altamont are only like 400 feet, and these are much bigger. They're incredibly huge. And all that, it's going to take a huge amount of concrete to resist the overturning forces on those, and here's a foundation. Has to be aerial views because they're so huge. Anyway, I think that saving the planet isn't just about carbon, it's about saving nature. And I think it's very short-sighted to build this thing. I'm running out of time, but here's a dead eagle slashed. I don't think it's, I think it's short-sighted to pave over Humboldt County and hack up wild animals, and we should preserve them. The wildlife is not expendable, and this is not for the greater good. For the greater good is preserving the wildlife. Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to keep my list straight here. I did not catch your name, Ms.?
Catherine Bettis.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Deborah, Angelina, Nicole, or Greg?
Hi, my name is Deborah Dukes, and I'm a 40-year resident of Humboldt County. I'm on the steering committee of 350 Humboldt, a local climate action group, and I speak initially on their behalf. As a group, we voted to support the Humboldt Wind Project because we are deeply concerned about the rapidly changing climate, and we concur with the many experts who promote onshore wind power as a necessary part of lessening our collective reliance on fossil fuels. Speaking as a private citizen of Humboldt County, I strongly support this project. I acknowledge that it's imperfect. All methods of energy generation have drawbacks, including solar panels and particularly the burning of fossil fuels. It concerns me that we are upset about impacting our beloved and beautiful part of this planet, but seem unconcerned- but seem unconcerned about areas that are devastated for fracking the natural gas that we import to burn in Humboldt Bay Power Plant, or for the mining of the minerals and rare earths used in the manufacture of PV panels. Until we recognize that this entire planet is our backyard and that the choices we make here affect everyone's climate, we're doomed to whatever increasing climate change has in store for us. Doing nothing is already having effects on Humboldt County. Warnings from climate scientists have become more frequent over the past 30 years or so. Most recently, on November 5th, one of the lead authors of an urgent call to action signed by more than 11,000 climate scientists stated on CNN, quote, "Postarity will remember policymakers badly for dismissing climate change as a serious threat to our civilization," end quote. I submit that we all need to think seven generations into the future, to a time when every living creature on this planet will have had to adapt to radically changed climates, including all the birds, the bats, the plants, and the humans who are still living on the North Coast. Please be good ancestors by approving the conditional use permit for this wind project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. Angelina, Nicole, or Greg?
I'm Angelina. Hello, Commissioners, I'm here to ask you to reject the wind energy project for numerous obvious reasons. The statement of overriding conditions is weak and lax. It's cookie-cutter. It does not state or prove how impacts outweigh benefits. No financial feasibility in current project, no alternative is feasible equals bad project. Completely no economic benefit to Humboldt County. I do not want to see Humboldt County continue to make poor economic decisions. If turbines are added, then SEQA is not working. If the outcome from SEQA makes this project not feasible, then we have to accept this project does not work in this location at this smallest scale. What is the 30-year feasibility of this project? Lawsuits could result in curtailment and identify in the next 30 years making this project not economically feasible long-term. Energy generated would be less than 2% of California's total wind energy, and curtailment would decrease that percentage by 1%. Does this small amount outweigh the irreversible impacts and the loss of carbon sinks? Curtailment after 25 years is about $50 million in revenue loss. Is it about money or doing what we know is best? No curtailment or mitigation for bats and other bird species means the best mitigation measures possible are not being implemented. Increased demand in wind energy over 30 years making curtailment an essential thing. Bay Area Wind Farm was shut down for bad practices in old turbines located in the high-bird area. Upgrades in the transmission line from Bridgeville and Cottonwood is to increase voltage to the higher demand and not to Humboldt. Demand for wind by CAISO shows that energy would go to the highest bidder or energy demand, which is larger cities. There is no plan to stop generating at the Humboldt Bay location, therefore, I'm not convinced. Our redwood forest ecosystem, as fragmented as it already is, shouldn't have to bear the impacts of supporting all of California and play a more important role in climate change. Research has shown that during changing temperatures, species need stable habitat to reside, too, that offer many ecosystem services. Research has also shown having less fragmented landscapes allows for species to move and migrate to new food sources to survive climate shifts and pressures. Climate refuges, as stated in the Democratic debate, will be essential for something for you to consider. Clear evidence shows there are better locations and more square foot area with more consistent wind speeds in Southern California. The soils are highly erodible at this site, and it has a history of major landslides. Stanford, in December 31st, 1996, destroyed eight homes, causing a $3.3 million lawsuit. I stand in solidarity with the Wiat people, and I hope you guys really consider this project as not being feasible and a bad project for Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Nicole or Greg, and then the next five who I would like to be prepared is Ann White, Nathaniel McEgan, Emily Mossman Smiley, Joyce King, and Alan Cook. Ann White, Nathaniel McEgan, Emily Mossman Smiley, Joyce King, and Alan Cook. Thank you.
Hi, I'm not really Greg Jasso. I'm Roger, and I was asked to come speak tonight. Greg was going to speak for me because last week I was at the Coyote Tribal installing their solar systems on the community center. And people have asked me to come because I've tried to think what can help you tonight because you've heard so much. And one thing is, all my coworkers are extremely distressed about not having something go forward, and many of them support this project, so I know there's not, there's not a lot of harmony about it. I'm a hands-on installer for over 41 years. I've spent the last 7,655 days on the rooftops and attics in this area putting in solar systems. So I guess what I can contribute as a laborer is what those realities are, and they're not bait, you know? If it takes a year for a day, a solar system a day, I mean, this is what I put in, part of my receipts for solar systems, I put in in this county. I do know that nowadays, if you have a base labor rate of $35 an hour and you put 5 kilowatt arrays on houses, they're going to cost $10,000 to $11,000. And if 800 people are installing them, it would take you four years to do 32,000 houses. So, I thought the wind, people said it was 800 people, but maybe it's only, so maybe it's only 400 and it takes eight years. I just want you to have that perspective, and I speak to thousands of families. It is so obvious to me, similar to food, we have so much waste, that planning should have a lot to do with dealing with us appreciating and becoming experts on what we already have. I mean, even I was guilty when the power was out the second time and not remembering. I have a soccer ball that I can kick on the beach in the morning, and it gives me three hours of light. We know how to be innovative. I was very into wind when it first started. I found the picture of the first solar system I did in 1998, and there's a wind generator in the background. None of the wind generators we put in there are still moving. They're not going. I'm very nervous about not just the issue of the place of the project, but moving parts, the lack of harmonious agreement moving forward. I've lived my whole life being told, "Don't vote for who you believe in, vote for the best-worst choice." You know, we need bomb shelters to live. We need DDT to live. It's not a culture that is renewable. So that's why, I think planning should focus a lot more on dealing with those kind of things, and I think this thing is, as someone has said already, this is the wrong place. It doesn't mean we shouldn't start moving forward quickly, but I encourage you to think about those things. I hope that's helpful for you. And your thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Nicole Byrd? Nicole Byrd? Nicole is a no-show. Then Ann White, Nathaniel McEgan, Emily Mossman Smiley, Joyce King, and Alan Cook.
Hi, I'm Ann White, and I live in Eureka. And I'm going to talk about the condors for a little bit here. The California condor, they lived for over 50 years. California condors mate for life, and the Wiat tribe is going to try and reintroduce them here on their native land. In 1979, the condor population was down to a population of between 23 and 27. In 1987, the Condor Recovery Program began a captive breeding program. After 32 years of monumental time and money spent, the population is now at 312. It's still critically endangered. The proposed site is in the Pacific Flyway, where millions of birds migrate from Alaska We know that the birds, bats, raptors, local and migrating birds will die, thousands, if the wind turbines are built. The word mitigation is used here over and over. How do you mitigate death? Death is final. How do you mitigate the death of thousands of birds, bats, and mammals? Death cannot be mitigated. Death is final and forever. No second chance. If I kill an eagle, if I kill an eagle, if you kill an eagle, we could get up to five years in a federal prison. So how can we give power companies a free pass on killing raptors, bats, and other precious birds and mammals? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Nathaniel, Emily, Joyce, or Alan?
Hello. We're living in the midst of Naomi Klein's disaster capitalism, which refers to the generation of profit based on the occurrence of some type of disaster, even though the thought, even the thought of generating profit from a disaster or suffering is most abhorrent. We must learn from our recent, from recent events. According to a San Francisco judge, PG&E paid out dividends instead of updating infrastructure. Some of the towers date back to 1910, according to the Wall Street Journal. This is the status quo for current capitalistic enterprises. Teragen is not an exception. Their bottom line is that 7.5% back to shareholders. Nathan wrapped up his spiel last week with the dollar amounts of the, dollar amounts of improvement to the grid that Teragen would be making, and how these updates will directly benefit Humboldt County. Not a fact. Now, I quote the North Coast Journal and RCEA Executive Director Matthew Marshall. Confused by rumors that locally-produced electricity would stay here in Humboldt County, the Journal reached out to Executive Director, asking how PG&E knew the ancestry of the electrons. Marshall explained, "All the electricity in the state goes into one big pool. There's currently no way to determine exactly where and how electrons used locally are generated." As stated, these grid updates will allow for energy produced in Humboldt County to flow to the Greater California Grid, which in turn gets Teragen investors their 7.5%. As stated by Michael Wickler of RCEA last week, the customer will not see any reduced cost. I'm not saying this because I dislike the rest of California, but the reality is that all of the major cities in California and the rest of the US need to become more self-sufficient. This is just the reality. Also, the larger grid will go extinct soon. The science is directed at making and storing energy where it is needed. It makes you wonder if Teragen is trying to take advantage of this situation. PG&E should be a public utility. The public should not even acknowledge projects that put profit before people. Nathan repeats that he cares. Climate change is real, we need to act. Well, I agree. We must act in a different fashion than the one that got us here. We cannot trust for-profit ideas when it comes to solutions in dealing with our current climate disaster. We need look not far into the past to see what worked. I had the pleasure of listening to Jana of Blue Lake Rancheria speak about how in a matter of 30 hours, they helped 10,000 people, worked with Health and Human Services to put up at-risk people, individuals in their hotel, and saved four community member lives. We need more microgrids, we need more Blue Lake Rancherias, we need to replicate their model at all our public schools, just to start. We need to incentivize using less energy. I'm a Native Hawaiian. We just passed the anniversary of the death of my queen. She was ripped from her position and tortured, as were my people, and now my culture struggles to survive. We have become dashboard hula dancers.
Please summarize, please.
I've lost, the Wiat people did not deserve what happened to their ancestors and do not deserve to be ignored now. Climate change has been accelerated because we did not listen to the native people. Now they're trying to tell us once again what's right. We must listen.
Thank you, Speaker. Nathaniel, Joyce King, or Alan Cook?
Hi, I'm Joyce King from McKinleyville. I believe overriding considerations brought us this emergency. Industrial civilizations' needs, taking precedence over life's biological needs, land use decisions according to human law, overriding natural law. Our human brains might be large, but in the self-centered, reductionist world we've created, it seems to have lost its ability to understand life's real necessities, like climax ecosystems, the complex, interwoven processes that took millions of years of trial and error to perfect, and to communities which sustained and healed themselves for millennia. The Native Americans were part of these. I think we're in trouble now because we choose economic systems over ecosystems, because of all the things we treat like animals in favor of our well-oiled machines. All the things we've not bothered to understand or have taken for granted. The air we look right through, the soil we treat like dirt, fellow creatures whose homes and lives we have taken or destroyed. To get out of this mess, I think we need biologists, people who understand what makes Humboldt the home of plants and animals with some of the longest unbroken genetic lineages in the world. They can understand, help us understand what makes Humboldt a climate refuge for the seed banks, I'm sorry, let me do that one over again. They could help us understand why Humboldt could be a climate refuge for the seed banks and blueprints of life we'll need to repair ecosystems rapidly disappearing all over the world. Let's weigh Humboldt's multimillion-year-old ecosystem contribution against the generation of 30 years of wind power. Let's weigh the sacrifices of life and home already made by Native Americans and native wildlife against the sacrifices of comfort, convenience, entertainment, and profit the rest of us might have to make. Please choose carbon sequestration, biodiversity preservation, and energy conservation. I have a short PS here, I hope I have time. Rapidly accelerating advances in less damaging alternatives like solar could make putting windmills on one of the last healthy pieces of the natural environment look like a crude, crippling solution in this climate change battle, like amputating an entire limb before we had antibiotics. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Would like to have Nate Madsen, Dan Chandler, Moxie Alveraz, Erin Reed, David Simpson, and Portia Herger. Nate Madsen, Dan Chandler, Moxie Alveraz, Erin Reed, David Simpson, Portia Herger. Please be prepared. And Nathaniel or Alan?
Alan Cook, longtime resident of Humboldt County, former, thank you, and a former member of the Eureka Energy Commission. So, and I have no conflicts of interest with regard to any of this, right? I have this funny idea, though, that government is supposed to do the most good for the most people. I don't think this Teragen project fits in that category. The county seems somewhat in the mood to bypass some regulations for this project, but I'm unaware of any good deeds that we can point to that Teragen has done to warrant such behavior. A project that would do more good for more people would be if the county could encourage landlords to install solar on the many rental houses. To date, many renters have not been able to participate in the financial advantages of solar, and this would change that. The county, their landlords, their renters, would all win. The county could minimize the regulations for expanding, for the solar contractors. They're experienced, they've done this. Collectively, the solar contractors could install a megawatt per month, and this could start next week. All right? You guys have heard an earful for many days and been very patient, but I'm hoping, hoping that you can keep in mind, the role of government should be to do the most good for the most people. The Teragen project doesn't fit into that category, but other projects could. Good day.
Thank you, Speaker. Nathaniel McEgan? Is Nathaniel McEgan here? We'll put him down as a no-show. Nate, Dan, Moxie, Erin, David, or Portia? One of you want to come forward, please?
Hi, everyone. My name is Moxie Alveraz. I will be ceding my time to Adam Cantor as I spoke last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Moxie. Thanks, U-Commission. Thanks, everybody, for having to speak. And I just want to say, you know, just because a renewable energy project, you know, is proposed for Humboldt County, we don't have to abandon all critical thinking skills. I mean... I mean, one of the first things we're taught in geography is that 70% of the world is ocean, leaving only 30% for terrestrial habitats that have had time to evolve over the millennia to develop the diversity that we see today. With that in mind, offshore is really the direction we need to be looking if we're going to do a utility project like this. And, um, you know, as for the Wiat's connection to Saki Uet, um, and to putting it in question, that's just blasphemy. You know, all respect to the Russ family, and we probably should have contacted them when we first heard about this project, but he really needs to contact his, his local archaeologist, and he will find out that it is well, well-agreed upon that the Athabaskans arrived hundreds of years after the Wiat had entered the Humboldt Bay Area. The Wiat have place names for areas on Bear River Ridge. This was a sacred site to the Wiat, and it should not be in question. And it's also rather disrespectful, all the people that want to make the analogy to Tullawatt. Do you think the tribe does not know that Tullawatt is vulnerable to sea level rise? Of course, we know. Why do you think we're fighting for our high ground, for some of the last pristine upland areas within our ancestral territory? That's why. And one big thing about this statement of overriding considerations and, um, compliance with the general plan is the project is not supposed to jeopardize, um, I think, the safety and well-being of members of the county. Well, there are countless things about this project that could jeopardize the safety and well-being of the county. One of the first that comes to mind is the increased risk of wildfire, um, to name one, not to mention the people that commute on Bear River Ridge Road and will have to be driving under the shadows of these giant turbines. And as far as AB 52 goes, I found an old email from back in February, um, that, um, I'll just read here. "The significance of Bear River Ridge cannot be overstated, and the impacts of these large 600-foot turbines have the potential to eliminate sacred sites of the Wiat. This portion of the ranch, this portion of the project should be denied and abandoned." So, we let you know early on in AB 52 that this was not acceptable, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife also let you know it was a Category 4 site. It should have been abandoned early, and we wouldn't be wasting all of our time right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Nate, Dan, Aaron, David, or Portia?
I'm Dan Chandler. I've lived here for 30 years. Thank you for hearing my comments. I'm a member of 350 Humboldt, but I'm speaking today as an individual. Despite very considerable efforts, the Humboldt Wind Project will not be able to mitigate all consequences of generation of about a third of the electricity that Humboldt County uses now. Opponents of the project want you to focus as narrowly as possible on these admittedly negative impacts of the project. I would ask you to take several steps back. Let me start with salmon. Just as salmon are associated with California, salmon are also associated with the area of Japan called Hokkaido. In the last 15 years, the salmon catch there has declined 70%. There's a cascade of global warming events causing this. Salmon depend on cold water, and the Sea of Okosk is the most dynamic factory of sea ice in the world, but that factory is failing. That's because parts of the Sea of Okosk have warmed 3 degrees Celsius, 5 degrees Fahrenheit, uh, measuring since pre-industrial times. The warming of the Sea of Okosk is in turn due to the warming of a wind that travels 1,000 miles from northern Siberia, where the temperature has warmed 2.7 degrees Celsius. Global warming is not uniform. There are hot spots, and in them, we can begin to see the future. We are entering a period where the predictions of science are increasingly dire, at a time when scary past predictions have already been shown to be overly optimistic. Up to 150 million climate refugees and the political destabilization they bring, heat stress in New York City greater than Bahrain today, drought and starvation, unbreathable air, and poisoned oceans are only a few of the phenomena we are like to see, likely to see in the next century. This is the frightening and overwhelming reality that has changed my thinking about the relative value of the unmitigatable impacts of the wind project versus a large amount of fossil-free energy. We still have a chance, if we can move rapidly away from fossil fuels. All of us need to make paramount the prevention of the worst effects of global warming around the world, but also right here in Humboldt, where the greatest sea level rise on the west coast is anticipated. Please support the Humboldt Wind Project. If this kind of critical fossil-free energy can be developed rapidly, there's at least a chance of reserving a livable world for the grandchildren of everyone who has testified. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. Nate, Aaron, David, or Portia? Aaron Reed, David Simpson, Portia Herger, Nate Madsen. And I will again call for the ones who did not respond earlier one last time. Barbara Kennedy, Roby Tenario, Laura Corsiglia, Lucinda Adamson, Monty Merrick, Cliff Berkowitz, Aaron Reed, David Simpson, Portia Herger. They, they conclude the list that signed up from last time, and so at this point in time, we will let the applicant make some, uh, comments relative to what the public comments on the FEIR and the DEIR have been.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Good evening, public, and thank you, Board of Com, Planning Commissioners and Chairman Morris. We appreciate your consideration. As, as a recent board supervisor said, we appreciate your, your unbiased consideration of, of this project, uh, this land use project, and anything that I say does not discount anything that you've heard from any member of the public. We, we respect all comments, and we appreciate the opportunity to have a vigorous debate. Um, I'll, I'll be brief, respectful of your time and the generous amount of time you've afforded me to date. So, I, I felt it's important to, to give a timeline of where we've gone, what we've been doing, um, and, and over what period of time those specific events have occurred. I've, uh, we've educated and informed you previously of this, and this is just a summary of this. We've been pursuing this for over three years. It's actually, if you look, four years, it'll be five years next year, uh, in various capacities. And some of the first work that we did was, was meaningfully engaged with many stakeholders. I'm certain we missed some. Uh, I'm certain we have not been able to or have not adapted the project in every way which every member of the public, but we have sought to improve it, and, and well before we ever submitted a conditional use permit application. So, uh, relative to tonight, we are very much looking forward for a clear direction from, from the Planning Commission, and we appreciate your, again, consideration as we move forward. Since last week, it's important to note added measures. Uh, I believe the county will be providing this, added measures in response to our continued discussion with not only stakeholders, um, but also listening to the public, and, and those four are as listed. There's four very important ones that we've been wrestling with. There's a bird tack or Technical Advisory Committee. Uh, that's been an added measure. Um, there's, there's been quite a few things that, uh, that have been said, uh, so there's some clarity provided here that is already in the final EIR that I want to highlight. Um, so we, we will commit to not having herbicide or rodenticide. Furthermore, we, we previously have committed, uh, we are committing to, to use scent detection dogs for monitoring, um, where, where it's completely appropriate, um, when difficult areas. That makes complete sense. That's logical. Um, and, and one new item, um, that we've, we've talked about for a while, but we're happy to put this in as a, a measure, is having a, establishing a, uh, as a point-of-sale in Humboldt County to maximize and keeping those dollars local if we're able to attain a, a project and, and move forward on it. So, we've added, you know, four critical measures. Uh, it hasn't been every single measure that the public or that all stakeholders have requested, but these are four, four critical measures that we can't afford to add to the project, and we appreciate all members, all stakeholders willing to engage with us, continuing to work with us, and we continue to work with, and, and we invite the continued ability to work with all parties, even those parties that don't like our project. So, so I believe the county will summarize, the staff reports and the addendums will summarize this, but the findings are as such. The net environmental gain is coming from this project, and there are benefits to, at the state, county, and local level. The EIR finds that there is a net environmental gain. And the benefits, as defined by the county, as when quantified, are outweigh the significant unavoidable impacts. It does not discount any of the impacts that we are having, but this project does have benefits that outweigh those significant unavoidable impacts, and we are asking for your clear decision tonight. So, uh, in regards, we've covered the impacts. You continue to hear about them. I'm certain you're going to continue to hear about them this evening. They've been well documented as guided by CEQA. Uh, it's important to also dig in a little bit to the environmental benefits. You've heard these. I wanted to add, summarize these in points. Um, California has an RPS. Uh, this contributes to the policy, uh, goals of the state of having 50% renewable energy consumed by 2030. So, that's at a state level. At a localized level here in, in Humboldt, the RCEA has, has clearly articulated long before we came along, but has recently up that, that they intend to consume 100% clean and renewable electricity by 2025. The Humboldt Project affords you that ability to act against that, and furthermore, to consume that locally, so that you're not just consuming, um, this clean renewable energy from an outside use, you're actually benefiting it from it locally and keeping Humboldt benefits in Humboldt. We have the, by virtue of this plant, as a function of how the grid actually works, you will directly displace PG&E fossil-fueled base power. It's, it's how wind is dispatched. We explained that last week. These are facts. We have the ability to directly displace emissions to the tune of over 384,000 metric tons of CO2. As Dr. Rick Golightly clearly articulated in the final EIR, there is a net benefit to the Marlboro Marlet. If you have any questions about these, we have a roster of experts here to speak to these, if you want any, any concerns about this. I understand how the public might distrust this. It doesn't seem obvious, but there is a net benefit to the Marlboro Marlets. We have the ability to power over 70,000 homes. I understand how the public might be, uh, there was a commenter that expressed concern about the changing numbers. We'll be happy to provide, uh, and have provided that to the county, how those calculations are made, using the Environmental Protection Agency's calculations. Uh, and more importantly, long before we showed up, this is consistent with the county's values and the county's general plan goals.
Please hold your comments.
There are also economic benefits. It's, it's local, clean power. It's stated in Repower Humboldt, and it's consistent with Humboldt values. It's consumed locally. Want to highlight that a majority of the project's output is, is expected to be consumed locally. There was a unanimous vote by the Redwood Coast Energy Authority with representatives from most of the large communities and small communities in the county. It's unanimous, 100%. Does everybody agree on the project? Absolutely not, but the vote to buy the power was unanimous. There'd be grid improvements beyond the project footprint to the tune of almost $14 million. We had a graphic explaining where those would be occurring and how that will increase to the resiliency and the reliability of the grid. There is a greenhouse gas reduction. That's directly attributable to this project. Will become the second-largest taxpayer. We've been working with the county to firm up and provide some of those numbers. It represents over $50 million. It's not an in-and-out. We have up, projected to have up to 300 construction jobs and up to 15 full-time jobs. And then, most importantly, again, an added, uh, measure is that we'll establish a point-of-sale. What this means is that when we, when we purchase the turbines and we, we issue a sales tax receipt, the sales tax associated with that, uh, with that purchase is registered based on where the business is, is located. So, we intend to establish, you know, that Humboldt County be established as the point-of-sale. And then, lastly, what this affords you, the economic benefits, is that it's, it's produced locally, but it's consumed locally. So, now what? This is the same slide, a shorter version. What happens now? We're almost, I've got one more slide after this, uh, which, which is the, the direct request to the board. To be, to be clear, if this project had never been, been put forth via an application, the powering of the lights in this room, the powering of your iPhones when you charge it, electric cars, and we could all afford them, comes from currently almost 50% from fossil fuel. That's RCEA's word. It's not mine. There are, and, and therefore, whether this project is coming forth or not for approval, there are impacts to all Humboldt County citizens. And, and so, we afford you via this project and the request of a clear vote tonight, we afford you to gain independence from fossil fuel, independence from PG&E. We can be a part, not the complete, but a part of that solution. The assumption, the implication, the opponents to our project, their words imply that the no-project alternative equates to no impacts. This is a false narrative. So, I would ask you what I asked you last week. If not in Humboldt, where? If not now, why? What is the impact of doing nothing? It's significant to all residents of Humboldt County. So, respectfully, I thank you for your time. I thank you, public, for your, uh, your willingness to participate in the democratic process. We live, and I, I would love that we have the opportunity for free speech. Whether I agree with you or not is irrelevant. We have, we live in the greatest country in the world, and so we appreciate this land-use-guided process. And in conclusion, I'd respectfully request that the Planning Commission certify the EIR, adopt the statement of overriding considerations, and approve the conditional use permit. We're requesting a clear direction on this project, a clear up or down vote. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to take questions and provide any clarity to any of the document, the information I've provided this evening.
Thank you, Speaker. I think we will, uh, we might hold our questions until we get to a discussion stage, and if we have any questions, we may call you back and, and ask questions. So, I appreciate your presentation so far.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And we'll just slip the note that David Simpson, who was on the list, uh, was out in the hall, did not hear his name, so is David Simpson still here?
I am still here. I'm a little overwhelmed by finding myself in a position of speaking last. I'm a little overwhelmed by the juggernaut of information that we've gained in recent weeks. We've learned more, far more about windmills than we ever wanted to know. And what do we do with that information? And how do we determine the right course forward? I suggest that in our hearts, dare I say, dare I invoke the heart, that we are going to live, if we approve this project, to regret it far more than if we approve the project and accept what comes. So, I'm urging my friends, my fellows, my communards, my fellow Humboldt County residents, inhabitants, I like to say, uh, I suggest you look in your hearts and, uh, ask yourself, what's the, uh, what way will we regret the least? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. And with that, we will close this section of the public comment dealing with the, the EIR and the FEIR, and, um, we will, um, bring it back to staff, who I believe has some additional information that they, uh, they want to present tonight. And just for everyone's, uh, information, following staff presentation on the new information tonight, we will have public comment on the limited information tonight, and, uh, I will limit public conference, uh, comments to one minute on the new information tonight. Go ahead, Beth.
Good evening, Chair Morris Commissioners. My name's Beth Burks, and I'm the assigned planner for this project. Tonight, our staff report's going to cover, uh, response to comments, some of the things we just heard this evening. we just heard this evening, excuse me, and also some of the things we've heard at past hearings. So we're going to cover a few of those, look at an overview of the staff report which you received. It was published on Monday. And then, also review the supplemental staff report you received as item supplemental number six, which was delivered this evening. Just real quick, before I get into my presentation, I think a few people today, and also at the last hearing, they mentioned the concerns over sort of the meteorology or microclimate. And we did address that in the staff report that was prepared for tonight and essentially found that, you know, the mixing that will happen by the turbines, it shouldn't affect the fog. We did some research on that, so I just wanted to make that comment, and there is more information about that in the staff report. So one of the other things we were asked to come back on, or come back with information on, was carbon neutrality. And we've been working to run these models, and I do have a little more information. Basically, based on the modeling we've done, which was a CalEMod model that's published for the state of California, it looks like the carbon neutrality will be reached within the first year of operations. And this is based on the vegetation types that were reported in the DEIR and as revised in the final EIR. And these are, this is California data from the Climate Action Registry. And this is a one-time loss that occurs at the beginning of the project when the vegetation is removed. The greenhouse gas emissions that go into the equation, they come from an amortized construction emissions and then also from the ongoing emissions due to maintenance of the project, which are fairly minor, but are included. The greenhouse gas emissions that are avoided, the way we've calculated that is very conservatively. We look at the existing regional power mix, and we look at how much of that would be displaced, or how much would be displaced by this project. So we put all of that together, and that's how we look at what, when we would reach carbon neutrality based on the sequestration loss. So wanted to bring that information back. Then I'm going to turn it over to Susan, who will talk a bit more about some of the biological information that we've, we wanted to bring back to your commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Susan Sanders with AECOM. I oversaw preparation of the Biological Resources Section of the draft and final EIR. I want to address some of the comments we've heard over the past couple of hearings, in particular from Cal Fish and Wildlife. But before I do that, I wanted to cover one topic that came up at the last hearing, which was the topic of deferred plans and permits. For all the mitigation measures and all the description of proposed plans and permits in the EIR, there are explicit and detailed performance standards, and there's specifications as to how they need to be implemented, what the enforcement is, and what the timing is, typically before approval of grading plans, before operation of the project. It's not unusual to have permits and plans pending before the EIR is certified. For example, an incidental take permit from Cal Fish and Wildlife cannot be approved until CEQA's complete. Normally, one does not get a SWIP permit, Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan, until the contractor's engaged, because the contractor usually prepares that SWIP. So CDFW talked about a number of comments that they had. They've brought their comments to our attention in a number of letters, and I wanted to go through those tonight. I also want to say, the department has been very generous with their time and their expertise. They've come to multiple meetings, engaged in multiple conference calls at the county's request, and the draft and final EIR has been much improved with their input. Now, on this list, I haven't included one item that I've been hearing a lot tonight, and that is the categorization of the project as either a category four or a category three. That is a category that was developed as part of the California Energy Commission, California Department of Fish and Wildlife Guidelines for Reducing Impacts to Wildlife. This is a voluntary set of guidelines to give guidance to local planners like yourself. There's nothing required about these categories. Department of Fish and Wildlife concluded that it was a category four project. That's a site which is inappropriate for wind development. That's two criteria for categorizing something as in a four. One is that it's protected by local, state, or federal government, like a wilderness area, nature preserve, or that it poses an unacceptable risk to wildlife. Category three are sites with higher uncertain potential for impacts to wildlife. We have concluded, the county has concluded, based on the studies that have been done, the refinement of the project, the micro-siting, the avoidance measures that have been implemented, proposed adaptive management compensatory mitigation, that this project does not pose an unacceptable risk to wildlife, and the site is not inappropriate for wind development. So one of the comments that the Cal Fish and Wildlife wanted to see included as a condition of approval was a bird technical advisory committee for both raptors and non-raptors, songbirds and other kinds of birds. And that's been included. Mitigation measure 3.5-11, which is to avoid, to avoid impacts, operational impacts on raptors, will now include a technical advisory committee very similar to the one that was proposed for bats, where they'd review the monitoring plan, monitoring data, and propose measures if there was impacts anticipated that were putting species of raptors or songbirds on a trajectory for falling below self-sustaining levels. They would provide recommendations to the county, which would be enforced by the county for the applicant to implement. The county also, other, Cal Fish and Wildlife also mentioned that they wanted to see curtailment for marbled merlets, for raptors. We have included in the mitigation measure, operational modifications, i.e. curtailment, as an option to be implemented if needed, and also included an option for Identiflight, which is the camera-based detection system, if warranted. So those are now included in the suite of tools that the technical advisory committee could offer up as adaptive management. Cal Fish and Wildlife also suggested that instead of monitoring for three years, as recommended in the EIR, three years of intensive monitoring, that that be extended to five years. And just to put that request in context, the guidelines I mentioned earlier, CEC and CDFW guidelines, recommend two years of monitoring. So three years is already more than what's recommended in those guidelines. But to put this in context, the mortality monitoring is driven by an evidence of absence model approach. This is a statistical tool that allows you to design and achieve a certain desired detection rate. And it's based on the concept that the absence of evidence is not the same as evidence of absence. In other words, if you don't find a marbled merlet dead under a turbine, it doesn't mean there wasn't one killed. And the reason for that is, there's a couple sources of error. The searcher could have missed the carcass, human or canine, or a scavenger took that bird away. And you deal with that by doing trials, searcher efficiency trials and scavenger trials, where you put out carcasses and see how long they last, you see which ones are missed. Then you use that information, and you create a detection rate that you have to achieve for marbled merlets, for small birds, for big birds, for bats, for eagles. There are specific detection rates specified in the mitigation measures in the EIR. If you don't achieve that detection rate for your target species in the first three years, then you could implement another couple more years of intensive monitoring if it was warranted, and that's something the TAC could advise on. But if it's not, then you've just, you have diminishing returns for years four and five if you do that. And we should mention also that this monitoring will occur for the life of the project. It will be at a reduced, reduced level of intensity after the first three years, and scent dogs are included as one of the tools. It's just one of the tools you can use to improve your search efficiency. You can also decrease the interval between searches. You could expand your search radius. It's one of the tools, and we didn't want to be too prescriptive and say that you had to use search dogs. There was a comment about hori-bats from Cal Fish and Wildlife. They wanted to see a lower threshold for the trigger for adaptive management. The mitigation measure 3.518, which is the mitigation for operational impacts on bats, has a 1.7 bat fatalities per megawatt per year, and Department of Fish and Wildlife wanted to cut that in half. That's an option. The technical advisory committee can make modifications. This is language excerpted from that mitigation measure. They can provide recommendations on modifications, including cutting that threshold in half if they need to. If they see that any bat population, and hori-bats are not listed, but there's a risk perhaps of them experiencing population declines from this and from other wind projects, they could implement that measure. So there is that flexibility with the bat technical advisory committee. And then, finally, there was a suggestion that because you have the risk of killing fully-protected species, which are the four I've listed here, that the only way to achieve take, you can't apply for a take permit for those fully-protected species, because this is a law that was implemented in the 60s before the California Endangered Species Act was in place. It was the only tools that were available, and there simply is no mechanism for take, and it's true. And then CCP is the only way. You can get a take permit, so to speak, for these species. But number one, we anticipate relatively low fatalities. If, in fact, some of these species, the use rates were very low in the project area. So we anticipate take likelihood is low. But more than that, a natural community conservation plan is not the right tool for addressing these kinds of impacts. And CCPs, which typically take anywhere between five and literally 20 years, it's a broad-brush, it's a tool to incorporate impacts that come from habitat loss within counties or regions from multiple projects, from multiple species. It's not really the right tool to address impacts where there's a very specific reason for the impact, i.e. collisions with rotor, with wind turbine blades. Instead, the bird TAC, I think, would be more effective in recommending targeted, specific ways to reduce impacts compared to a natural community conservation plan. And that's all I have, Beth.
Thanks, Susan. So I'm going to walk us through here what you've got in your packets for this evening for the staff report that was repaired. There is a CEQA resolution to certify the EIR. There's a use permit and special permit resolution, recommended conditions of approval, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. I'm going to kind of just breeze through some of these. You also received supplemental information number six. This had minor updates, which we'll go over in my presentation to the EIR resolution, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and a couple extra conditions of approval. You also received attachments with supplemental six that include a financial analysis, and this was submitted by the applicant today, and this outlines the financial infeasibility of the suggested marbled merlet curtailment, Identiflight, and automated lighting. There's also a letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which raised concerns about water supply and quality, and this was addressed through a condition, which we will also talk about in a little bit. And then, an RCEA letter that discusses the difficulty of changing the price agreed to in the power purchase agreement to accommodate additional mitigations. The CEQA resolution to certify the EIR, it basically walks through the entire CEQA process through scoping to the final EIR and makes findings related to how the project was conducted. It provides findings related to mitigation measures and alternatives, and describes what mitigations have been revised and why they are more, equally are more effective than the original measures. It also makes findings related to feasibility or infeasibility of alternatives and what mitigations were found to be infeasible. The resolution does include a statement of overriding considerations. And I should say, the reason we brought these resolutions before you is that staff does believe that all the required findings for the project can be made, and if your commission finds that the statement of overriding considerations, if the benefits of the project outweigh the significant impacts, then we believe the findings for the project can be made and would recommend approval. So within the CEQA resolution, there was a couple of minor changes which are included in the supplement six, and that is just adding a little more information based on the financial infeasibility information we received today. So it adds discussion about marbled merlet curtailment and alternatives. Essentially, the marbled merlet curtailment would reduce the internal rate of return by 0.75%, and that's equivalent to about $38.6 million over the life of the project if the curtailment that's been suggested were to be applied. And similarly, the alternatives have similar language that's been added to them. The statement of overriding considerations, which is included in the resolution, it covers environmental benefits of the project, local and regional benefits and economic benefits. I'm going to go through some of those here, and they're obviously exhaustively listed in the resolution. The project would assist in meeting California goals to reduce greenhouse gases and increase the renewable energy portfolio. It would displace 3,800, sorry, 384,000, sorry, metric tons of carbon dioxide per year. Renewable power would be sufficient to power 70,000 households, and it would be equivalent to removing 81,543 passenger vehicles for one year. And there's many other equivalents that are listed in the staff report. I think another good one to point out that isn't on the slide is its equivalent carbon sequestration from the project, and this is that the acres of US, it's basically equivalent to saving over 450,000 acres of US forests for one year, or preserving 3,117 acres of US forests from conversion. So those are, again, listed in the staff report. I don't want to go through them all exhaustively here, but they are covered in the statement of overriding considerations. There's also infrastructure benefits associated with the project. The applicant would contribute approximately $14 million to local grid improvements, approximately $5 million to undergrounding high-risk PG&E distribution lines. There would be updated power infrastructure at Humboldt, Cottonwood, and Bridgeville substations, transmission line upgrades from Bridgeville to Cottonwood, and $2.2 million to decouple Humboldt wind from the Cottonwood and the broader grids. So this would be kind of one step in the direction of that islanding effect people are having a lot of questions about. In terms of local benefits, there are general plan policies that support this project, and specifically, those are policies in the energy elements, and that is policy EG3, which is supply of energy from local and renewable sources. And this also calls for us to become an energy exporter. So that's one of the general plan policies that's already adopted. Additionally, there's policy EP3, which supports a local renewable energy supply, and this calls for the county to support energy development projects, including wind, biomass, and solar and run-of-the-river hydroelectric. The project would assess RCEA in achieving the goal of 100% renewable energy by 2025, and the anticipated tax revenue is $50 million over the 30 years of the project. So the next resolution that's in your packet is the use permit and special permit resolution. This is, you know, probably a resolution that you're very accustomed to seeing. It has all the same findings that are required for all use permits and special permits, conformance with the general plan, conformance with zoning, does it achieve housing element densities, which is a required finding, but not particularly related to this project, and also to make the finding that it's not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. So that resolution is included in your packet. We do have, another item in your packet is the recommended conditions of approval, and there's a couple new ones to discuss, and those are included in supplement six. There's also a couple that we want to put up here for the first time based on what we learned from the applicant tonight and other discussions we've had. So one that's in supplement six is revised condition 17. This has to do with the financial assurance. So we do, the county will be requiring a bond for decommissioning of this project, and that bond would cover all decommissioning costs and would be prepared by a licensed engineer. The amount could be then approved by the county and helped by the county in the event that the project, you know, was abandoned for any reason or at the end of the life of the project. So this condition was already in the conditions of approval you received in your original packet, but we have added language to make it a little more clear. more clear. So the suggested language we have is that if operations cease for a one-year period, an application for remediation and removal must be submitted within six months of abandonment. Decommissioning of the site must be complete within three years of cessation of operations. And then we also have a requirement that the bond be sufficient to account for inflation over the 30-year life of the project. Another condition, which is actually a new condition based on the Regional Water Board letter, which we received today, we've been in correspondence with them, and they've helped us draft this condition to be sure that it meets their needs and addresses the concerns they've raised. But, so this would be new condition number 23, and this would be prior to issuance of any permits or initiating construction activities, the applicant shall submit evidence that reuse of processed water is regulated under waste discharge requirements or waiver of waste discharge requirements issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So again, they have confirmed that by adding this condition, this would meet their needs. There's also one other new condition, which I think Nathan mentioned being agreeable to in his presentation, and also, we'll make sure that the $50,000 that's stated in the statement of overriding considerations is actually what comes to the county, and that's within 60 days of project approval, the applicant shall establish a point-of-sale destination within Humboldt County, such as a street address within Humboldt County for acquisition, billing, and purchasing purposes, registering this address with the State Board of Equalization, and using this address for acquisition, billing, and purchasing purposes. So, this condition, again, will be our assurance that if the project's approved, the money will be staying local. Another item in your packet is the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. What this document does is really detail all of the mitigations that are related to the project. So as you can see, it's really lengthy. It lists the timing of those mitigations, when they are to occur, either during project, pre-construction, post-construction, spells all of that out, who the responsible party is for completing them, and then who the enforcement mechanism for each mitigation measure. So we have one small requested change to a mitigation measure, and that has to do with the air quality measure, and this is related to construction equipment, and we already had an air quality measure 3.4-1, which required all equipment to be current-phase equipment under the Aero Resources Board, and this was to reduce emissions related to construction. We have decided, or are recommending adding some language, which was included in the supplemental, it's really just more details on best management practices for that construction equipment to make sure that emissions are reduced. So for example, all equipment needs to be maintained in good working order and to manufacture specifications. We're looking at having, you know, lowering idling times to no more than five minutes, and use of electrically powered equipment shall be used when feasible. So it's just kind of a laundry list there that, you know, will help enforce this mitigation. So that's the only change there. So that concludes our presentation. We're certainly open for questions and, you know, anything we can do to help.
And so what we'll do is we'll allow the commissioners to ask for any clarifications on the information presented by staff. I don't want to get into a discussion stage, so just clarification in their information, and then we'll go to public comment. Noah?
Hi, thanks, Beth. That was really clear. Just a quick clarification on the tax revenue. You said you were estimating 50 million over 30 years. Is that including the point-of-sale tax for the initial construction purchases, as well as the ongoing property tax?
Yeah, actually, I think the property tax is a little bit different. There's a separate figure for that, which I didn't pull out in my presentation, but it is included in your packet, and that's another $50,000. So it is, the point-of-sale is what that 50 million relates to.
Okay.
Any other questions or clarification on staff report?
I have a question about the cultural mitigation. So, reading through here, the only mitigation that you were able to come up with was digging up 100 plants and giving those to the Wiatz? That's it?
So that actually has been revised, so that, and we talked about this a little bit last time, we've taken away that plant cap, and just had it be related more to coordinating with the tribe and allowing them to work together to salvage plants and tell the applicant what's important for them to take back. But we don't have any new mitigations proposed related to-
Is that something that they asked for, or something that you offered?
It was something that was discussed during consultation.
Any other questions, clarifications? If not, then we will open this up for public comment, and I am going to limit the public comment since this is not as big and broad and massive data as we had with the EIRs. So I am going to limit it to one minute, and we will probably take a recess in about 20 minutes. So I have a sign-up list here, and I will read four or five of these, and if you could be prepared to speak, I have a Julie Woodward, I have a Rick Pellrin, I have a Deird Garnis-
Deborah.
Deborah, I'm sorry. Deborah Garnis, Susan Nesson. So we have Julie, Rick, Deborah, and Susan. And so if one of you want to approach the podium, and one minute, please. Suzanne?
I'm, okay. Julie Woodall, City of Riedel, City Council. I went away for vacation. The EIR came back. Now we're here, we're at, this is the first meeting I've been able to attend. I won't say much because we sent a letter of opposition as a city, and it covered about everything, so I hope you were all able to read it. The one thing I have looking at this, it says, "In addition to the number of significant environmental impacts, given the magnitude of the project, the city is concerned that the project is being fast-tracked for the benefit of the developer." And it's a detriment, sorry, a detriment to the community. And I feel like that's true. And I would wish we could give a little more time to really look at this more, and I, as the council, oppose it, I as a citizen oppose it, and I stand with the Wiat tribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I will reiterate that, you know, please have your comments pertinent to the new information that the staff presented tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the staff report released Monday is also inaccurate, among the long list of other inaccuracies. Staff report said, in response to the hydro-meteorology comment, that there'd be, oh, no problem with it downstream. We're not talking downstream. Downstream is Riedel and Fortuna. We're talking about the Redwood State Park, and that is upstream. I don't know what they're talking about. Previous, also other things, the maps shown on Chapter 9, Figure 2.1 and 2.2 conflict with the maps on Appendix C, Figure 2.2. How can we make an informed decision? The EIR is inadequate and needs to be recirculated.
Thank you, Speaker. Deborah or Susan, and following that will be Ruth Allen, Frank Basic, Christopher West. Following Deborah or Susan will be Ruth Allen, Frank Basic, Christopher West.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Garnes, Mayor, City of Riedel. I'm here to, not to restate the letter from the City of Riedel, I'm here to make it plain that we need to turn our eyes away from Terregen and to turn them to the county and the Board of Supervisors. And the reason I say this is because the EIR is a document of the county, not of Terregen, as has been stated. So every time the EIR states that CEQA does not ask for certain things because of financial issues, it is really the county saying, "We are not asking for those answers." So that is something that we need to really pay attention to. It is irresponsible to rush through a project just to get private business tax credits. So I would just say in closing, because I know I'm running out of time, that is the irony of, the logo of Humboldt County is a redwood tree with the words, "Home of the redwoods." We are going to dwarf those redwoods by over 300 feet. So I'm assuming that the county will change their logo to clear-cut the redwoods and replace it with a turbine. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Susan, then followed by Ruth, Frank Basic, Christopher West.
Thank you. Susan Nesson, Riedel. I disagree with staff. I have a paper from the California Water Board disagreeing with the use of Terregen's water supply. As, I don't have a lot of technical stuff, but I'm going to tell you, I have a wonderful neighbor. We get along really good. If we were going to build a storage shed, because we share our lawn equipment together, if we're going to do a storage shed, and it's going to be in my backyard, but I only get 30% of it, which is what Terregen says that Humboldt County is going to get in the way of power, and she gets the other 70%, what kind of deal is that? Would you go for it? No to Terregen.
Thank you, Speaker. Ruth Allen, Frank Basic, Christopher West, and Geneva Thompson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ruth Allen. I live in Riedel, been there almost eight years. Before that, I was 10 years in Eureka. According to Steve Warner at the Humboldt County Planning Department, there would be 47 wind turbines instead of 60, located on Monument and Bear River Ridge, each producing 2.5 megawatts of electrical power. That's a total of 120 megawatts for the Humboldt Wind Project. That's a far cry from the 155 megawatts claimed by the applicant's original estimate. There will be 20% line loss in the transmission of power to the Bridgeville Station, and another 30% line loss from the Bridgeville Station to the cities of Fortuna and Eureka. So now we're talking about 50% line loss, not the 20% that was stated in the DEIR. Okay, let's do the math. 121 megawatts, 50% line loss equals 60 megawatts. That is enough power for about 20,000 homes. And that is only if the wind is blowing. Many days, the wind does not blow at all. Do we really want to trade all that forested area for 60 megawatts of power? No.
Thank you, Speaker. Frank Basic, Christopher West, Geneva Thompson, and Howard Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Frank Basic. I'm president of the Town and Scotia Company. We oppose the project because of the inadequacy of the EIR. And with the little time I have today, the best example is the one that was just put before you, an objection letter by the Regional Water Quality Control Board staff today. There's never been any reasoned analysis of available water supply for this project. It requires 62 acre-feet in order to go forward with cement mixing and road watering and compaction, and you will look in vain for any analysis in the EIR. And so what staff has said here is, "Oh, we've added another condition that says get an NPDES permit." That doesn't address the fact that there never was any analysis of water supply. It's simply an assertion that they can use Scotia's log pond, which they cannot. It's not theirs, and there's no right, and no title, and no entitlement to remove or divert any form of the wastewater treatment facility to this need for water. So, staff has told us as much today, and this is just a single example of the faulty EIR that's before you. No water analysis. Look for it. You won't find it.
Thank you. Christopher West, Geneva Thompson, Howard Russell, Barbara Guest.
I agree. My name is Geneva Thompson, and I'm the Associate General Counsel for the UROC tribe. The UROC tribe would like to submit these written comments to the commission to be placed on the record. As you're well aware, the project will have, thank you, significant environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated to a less than significant level. These include tribal cultural resources. These significant environmental harms clearly outweigh the stated benefits of the project. Further, the EIR and changes in the staff report and staff presentation are significant modifications compared to the DEIR and trigger the necessity to recirculate a new DEIR for public comment and conduct new environmental analysis and research. The UROC tribe is concerned that, in the EIR, FEIR, and staff report, that did not address the biological-environmental impact to the California condor. This missing analysis makes the EIR inadequate and in violation of CEQA. The Bird TAC discussed in the staff report is also an inadequate mitigation measure because it accepts mortalities of special-status species that drops below self-sustaining levels, which is inappropriate. We urge the Humboldt County Commission to make the environmental justice decision and reject this project and not certify the EIR and statements of overriding considerations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Speaker. Christopher West, Howard Russell, Barbara Guest, and Nancy Ihara.
Hello, I'm Christopher West. I represent the UROC tribe, and I'm going to be speaking to biological issues, and primarily with relation to the Planning Commission staff report and the original EIR, I feel like there was some lack of contingency planning that's problematic. Three of the issues that we discussed, or that we submitted through comments, were not addressed in the commission report. The first is the fact that there is no decision yet as to how condors will be reintroduced to the area, whether they would have a nonessential designation, whether they would have a no-action alternative, or whether they would have protection under the Endangered Species Act. There's no planning if they do have full protection. The second point is that it has been suggested that a geofence could be used to protect the birds, using satellite transmitters attached to the condors. Unfortunately, as we mentioned before, the wind farm project is proposed for 30 years, the condor project is proposed for 20 years. We're still not quite sure who would be picking up an additional 10 years of condor monitoring, trapping, and tracking required to maintain the geofence. Identified was suggested, then it was said that it was financially infeasible, then it was suggested again, now it appears it's financially infeasible again. Not quite sure where things stand on that. Seems to be waffling back and forth quite a bit. Also, another thing that we mentioned was the Gentai line, that that provides a collision hazard for condors, and that was not addressed at all. The one contingency plan that was put forth, related to the TAC, and as Geneva just mentioned, that would allow for mitigation measures to be put in place if a special-status population dropped below self-sustaining measures or levels. That's not really a contingency plan to wait for a special-status species to drop until the population's in dire condition at an extremely low biological threshold, and it's certainly not a best management practice. So, we would suggest a reevaluation, recirculation of the EIR.
Thank you, Speaker. Howard Russell, Barbara Guest, Nancy Ihara, and Dan Baron.
Good evening, Barbara Guest. Well, please don't certify the final environmental impact report as it's not addressing all potential risks of the Humboldt Wind LLC project. Please do not approve, with or without condition, the conditional use permit for this project. This project needs to be relocated where it will do no harm. Terregen claims this is just a land-use decision. Obviously, it has not listened to the people who have come before this commission. The mandate of government is to protect its people and its assets at a minimum. Monument Ridge and Bear River Ridge will be destroyed by this project, and Humboldt County will not be protecting its assets. As mentioned multiple times, the historic town of Scotia, the Avenue of the Giants, and the Wiat cultural lands need to be protected. One of the commissioners mentioned the greater-good rationalization. Politicians must stop acting like the ends justify the means. Over and over again, political decisions based on economic criteria fail. Political measures defended on the sole basis that they will bring about some good consequence-
Please summarize.
...that supposedly outweighs the costs. There are always costs, and therefore, victims of government action. However, when the costs are loss of historic cultural lands, destruction of a pure sacred-
Speaker, please summarize.
...ecological, bountiful land, the argument of greater good falls apart.
Please summarize.
Okay. I would submit that saving this property and protecting this property for future generations is the real greater good. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Howard Russell, Nancy Ihara, Dan Baron, and Ken Miller. Howard, Nancy, Dan, or Ken?
My name is Dr. Daniel Barton. I have terrible handwriting, and I'm an associate professor of wildlife biology at Humboldt State. I study seabirds and other wildlife, including the impacts of alternative energy projects and power infrastructure on birds, but I speak today as a private individual. I have three minutes of comments here that I previously submitted via email. I'm going to just hand them to you in writing. In brief, I believe this project continues to pose significant unmitigated impacts to marble marlet raptors- this project continues to pose significant unmitigated impacts to marble mirallet raptors and bats that pursue it. CEQA deserves additional analysis and consideration of mitigation alternatives before project approval, which would essentially require recirculation. And then based on input provided tonight from county staff, I respectfully question the county or ACOM's qualifications to preferentially assess the wildlife impacts of this or any other project above the state's Public Trustee Agency for Wildlife, which is the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, not Humboldt County. I also encourage the Commission to consider the Wiat peoples' comments ahead of my own, their concerns. As a sovereign nation of survivors of colonization and genocide that are now being asked to bear the burden of repowering the world, Europeans have so changed, should be paramount. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Howard Russell, Nancy Ihara, Ken Miller, and Sylvie, Sylvie Hunter, Hunterage, I believe.
Hunter age nine.
Hunter age nine. All right. We got that straight. Thank you.
My name is Sylvie Hunter, and I'm nine years old. You need to put in the windmills. It's very important to stop climate change sooner rather than later. If we do not do this, then what is our future worth? We need to grow up, have kids, and lead a life. If climate change continues, the earth will die. All of it. The birds, the monkeys, the shark, the fish, and us. We will die without reaching adulthood. That is why you need to put in the windmills.
Thank you. Howard, Nancy, Ken Miller, Anne White. A what? I have Dan Baron or Barton. I had Dan Barton.
You didn't reach Dan Berger yet?
Not yet. Howard, Nancy, Ken, or Anne?
He's Dan Barton.
Dan Baron, I think it was my handwriting. I'm Dan Barton.
Yeah, now that I look at it, there is a T there. Somewhat. Now, excuse me, Director, what do you say about Anne White?
She has spoken already tonight, and she declines to speak again.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
Commissioners, first of all, I want to say that no project means solar. I just wanted to share with you the Skookamchuck project, which is the only other one in mirallet range. This is what you do when you really want to protect mirallets. Here's what they're doing. They're curtailing turbine activity on 10 of their turbines. They're buying 616 acres with conservation easements. They're removing 91 to 96 fishing net segments. They're donating $17,000 to the schools. I'm not for mitigations because I don't think this can be mitigated. I just want you to understand what a project that really wants to protect mirallets actually does, because this doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Howard, Nancy, Stuart Moskowitz, or Bonnie Blackberry? Howard, Nancy, Stuart, Bonnie Blackberry.
Good afternoon. My name is Stuart Moskowitz. I'm here representing the Sanctuary Forest Land Trust. I believe you have a copy in front of you of a letter I submitted at the beginning of the meeting. I'm here to represent a three-acre conservation easement that's already on Humboldt Redwood Company land and is in the impacted area. And as best I can tell, I have seen no reference to this conservation easement. It's the Luna Conservation Easement that was the site of the Julia Butterfly Hills two-year tree sit. There's now a legally binding document that protects this land in perpetuity, and Sanctuary Forest, as stewards of that easement, is responsible for protecting that land and having access to that land. As best I can tell from the maps that I've looked at, Luna is at the edge of the impacted area, but more important, it appears that the tie-in line runs really, really close to where Luna is at. And we need to make sure that that tie-in line and the road up the Jordan Creek watershed do not get in the way of the Luna easement. So please make sure that you do consider this, and if we can make sure that, again, that tie-in line stays fully clear so that we can still continue access and protecting this easement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Howard Russell and Nancy Ihara, I think I've called three times. Howard Russell, Nancy Ihara, are either one of those parties still here? Okay. We have Bonnie Blackberry, Patrick Boilin, Boiler, Larry Brando, Michael Evanson. Bonnie Blackberry, Larry Bravo, Michael Evanson, Patrick Boiler, I believe, is the writing.
Thank you for considering this. This is Michael Evanson. Have to read fast, unfortunately. CEQA involves greenhouse gases, but it's not an overriding writing concern. I'm happy to work with 350.org people. I share many values, but on non-lethal measures. TAC, it's kind of hokey. Is this the best we can do? I've been on many TACs. I've been on federal advisory committee meetings and hearings, and I don't see references in their suggested new mitigations. I don't see any real documentation that there's anything other than opinion there. TAC approach has not protected species in the past. We've seen them decline. I don't see why we have any faith in them. We're just seeing how things, we're slowing down how things get worse. So please don't let Terre Gens biologists turn this into a science project. Humboldt County deserves better. We know we can do better.
Thank you, Speaker. Bonnie Blackberry, Larry Bravo, Patrick Boilin, and after that, we will take a recess, a 10-minute recess. So Bonnie, Larry, or Patrick?
My name's Larry Bravo. I'm a neighbor, neighbor of this project. I live about a mile and a half away from it. And my concern is the geology. With regard to the geology, the area of this project consists of thin loose rocky soil on top of climbing unstable bedrock of the Francasin formations. These rocks make up most of the outer coastal range between here and San Francisco. They originated during the last part of the Mesozoic era, the Upper Jurassic, through the Crisocius period mostly, and a rough estimate of 110 to 5 million years of before present in age. According to the geology theory of plate technology, there is existent at that time an oceanic trench system off the west coast of the continent. At that time, oceanic crust was being thrust under the-
If you could summarize, please. If you could summarize, please.
How do you mean?
If you could summarize what you have before you, you've submitted it to us in writing, but if, you know, if you could just summarize, please, your time is up.
Well, I'm trying to get through with it. I probably only have enough time for it.
Yeah, you probably won't, because it's a multi-page. You've submitted it here, and your time has elapsed.
Okay. There's these plates, technotics, that are existent to the time in the oceanic trench system off the west coast of the continent. And at that time, you know, crust has been thrust under the continent.
Please, Speaker, we have it before us, and we do not have time for you to read it. You have gone past your time.
Okay.
And your information is submitted. We have it in writing. You've given it to us, and we have it here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Bonnie Blackberry, or Patrick, and after that, we'll take a break. Bonnie or Patrick?
No comment.
Pardon?
No comment. Thank you.
For Patrick? Thank you. Bonnie, is Bonnie still here? Bonnie Blackberry?
I think she left.
All right. Then with that, we will take a break. We will come back at 6:15, and we will resume. Thank you. Recession to an end, please. Please take your seats. And next on our list of speakers is Joanne Tibbetts, Tim Guthrie, A. Roberts, and I can hardly read this one. Jack, start with the N. What was that? All right, that's who it is, Jack. So Joan, Tim, A. Roberts, and Jack.
Good evening. My name is Joan Tibbetts. You have my written statement, which I won't read to you because you can read it yourselves.
Thank you.
What came up to my mind after listening to what was presented tonight is a couple of things. One is, when I talk about decommissioning, I don't believe that includes removing that concrete foot pads. And from what I understand, that would be basically paving over a sacred bridge that's very biodiverse at this point, and also sequesters a lot of carbon, and that would be a permanent removal of that function from our planet. And I don't, I don't, I don't agree that that is a good compensation for generating some green energy. It doesn't seem very green. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. And I may add, just for everyone's information, I think a lot of you have written testimony that you've given to us, and you don't necessarily have to read it. We can probably read faster. You can speak. I'll leave it up to you. But what might be more appropriate for us, it would be a summary if your submission is lengthy. Anyway, next speaker.
My name is Tim Guthrie-Locke, and I've lived in Humboldt County my whole life. I heard a statement at the beginning of this thing that we need to think about mutual respect, that everyone should have mutual respect for the other side. There is no mutual respect with desecrating. Oh, also, I want to make it clear, I have no affiliation with the Wiat tribe or any other tribe. I just fucking live here.
Please, please watch your language. Please, we're on video, and there may be children, so please watch your language.
That's okay.
Not for me, it's not.
No, it is okay. I can say whatever the fuck I want to.
Please, listen. Cut his mic. Cut his mic. You're done. We will not handle language like that. Thank you. That's fine. That's fine. Your time is up. We have A. Roberts, we have Jack, we have Sky Salgonic, Salganic, if I pronounce it right, and Jean McCovey. A. Roberts, Jack, Sky Salgonic, and Jean McCovey.
Hello, I'm Mix Roberts, and I'm here because I want to provide answers to a question that was posed last week that hasn't been answered anywhere else. The question was, where were the Wiat during the Shell Wind Project that overlaps this area? They were out in opposition in force, only it was Ferndale that was taking the spearhead, and they were behind us. However, I will point out that it is public record that during that time, tribal elder, Wiat tribal elder Cheryl Seidner ran for supervisor in order to stop the project because they did not have the powers that they do with the new laws. I stand with the Wiat. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack, is Jack here? Sky Salgonic, Jean McCovey, Doug Smith?
Good evening. My name is Sky Salganic, and I am a graduate student at Humboldt State University. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Hori Bat. Mitigation for this project seeks to prevent populations from falling below self-sustaining levels, but it's difficult to get actual population numbers on the Hori Bat. The Hori Bat is a small, flying, nocturnal, and long-distance migratory species, and it's very difficult to detect and get accurate population estimate. A study in 2013 estimated that 200,000 to 400,000 mortalities are occurring across the US and Canada, and of this number, nearly 38% are Hori Bat. It's unknown why this many Hori Bats are facing mortality at wind turbines, but it's been suggested that they're using these wind turbines as a navigation device, like a landmark in these long-distance migrations. And Humboldt County is maybe an important mating area for the Hori Bat. It's captured in great numbers in Humboldt County, greater numbers than anywhere across the nation during the fall. So I believe that further study on Hori Bat activity on the proposed ridge is needed before we can do development for wind energy here. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack, Jeannie, Doug Smith, Lucinda Adamson. Jack, and I cannot hardly read the writing. Neumberg?
Nounen.
Nounen, Jack Nounen. Jeannie McCovey, Doug Smith, Lucinda Adamson.
My name is Jean McCovey. I'm a Uroch Elder, and I'd like to witness that we have brought home the condor from the museums, and we have, are raising them. But I'd like to talk about the cumulative effect of atmosphere, atmospheric rivers in the sky. And that leads up to Humboldt County should not allow clear-cut logging. It's a mitigation measure for climate change. Jordan Creek is an impaired stream, and its cumulative effect is wide. The wide roads that these machines will be having to use and build is on soil that is known to slides. And we are in a tectonic plate where three of them are coming together here, and they will shake, and you cannot not shake them, and it's something that we have to deal with. And PG&E does the herbicides for underneath their lines, and any of the new lines that are going to be having to done will have to be, have to deal with that also, and it's not in the-
If you could summarize, please. Please summarize.
There's 100 gallons of oil in each of those turbines, and that has to go and be someplace. It's 10 feet of cement down on the ground.
Please, Speaker, summarize, please.
And I appreciate the time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Doug Smith, Lucinda Adamson, Adam Cantor.
I believe Jack's in the overflow room, probably. I'm Doug Smith. I don't really understand this project, people keep talking about houses, but what we're really talking about is everybody plugging in their electric car. We need to double our, the amount of electricity we have. This EIR and this whole process isn't really understandable. It seems like there's going to be a bunch of these outdated, outmoded wind turbines. I'm reading right here, Ontario just canceled a project of 750 renewable energy projects, and they're spending over $200 million to get rid of their projects. In this article, quote, "Two hours east of Toronto, cranes started arriving last month to tear down 100-meter-tall wind turbines that were just built and ready to be switched on. The project was more than a decade in the making." Well, we'll see what happens with that. There's a lot of turbines out there that are, need somewhere to go.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Lucinda Adamson, Adam Cantor, Dan Close.
Hi, my name's Lucinda Adamson. I'm an Arcata resident, and I have been a wildlife rehabilitator at the Humboldt Wildlife Care Center for 10 years. I'm speaking today as a private individual, though. So first, I wanted to second the comments that were made earlier tonight by Dan Barton. It was extremely insulting tonight to hear county staff override the expertise of wildlife professionals. This is a site that is not, sorry, I'm nervous tonight, is not suited for wind energy, and there is significant harm to wildlife here. I'm running out of time, so I'm going to skip some of what I'd like to say, but I did want to summarize with that. I do stand with the, the We'ot, I stand with the Yurok and their comments tonight about the condors, and I stand with our wild neighbors who are also residents of this county but have absolutely zero voice in any of this process. And I ask you to respectfully decline this project and reject the final EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Adam Cantor, Dan Close, Emily Mossman-Smiley.
Hi, Adam Cantor, I just wanted to address the mitigation of ethno-botanical species. The tribe has never agreed to any mitigations because we feel the project is unmitigable and unavoidable. I have an email here from November 4th that, that states from the county, "We wanted to make sure that you saw the following was added to the reclamation revegetation in weak controllable pan in relation to the ethno-botanical area, that We'ot tribe will be able to select up to 100 plants to be salvaged and place into one gallon plants, up 200 cuttings, less than three feet height, blah, blah, blah." And so I never responded, or no one responded to this email, we never agreed to any mitigations. And also wanted to let the commission know that we have a petition encouraging the commission to recommend denial of the project that presently has over 1,800 signatures, and I will be providing that to the county via email. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Dan Close, Emily Mossman-Smiley, and Lanell Caverly.
Hi, my name's Emily. I just felt like it's inappropriate that as a property taxpayer and as a community member in general, that I only get three minutes, and you only give us one minute now. Terigen gets to spend at least three minutes discussing how he respects the community, but ultimately calls us liars because he has all the facts. I am missing work today because the council thought it appropriate to dismiss my time last week and instead allowed Nathan to repeat the word "facts" 1,000 times in his closing without any comments to please summarize. Not only is this disrespect of the community members, but continued disrespect of the native peoples of this land by community continuing to consider this project. Also, why are we having these hearings on weekdays at a time when most people are still at school or work? Thanks.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Dan Close, Lanell Caverly, Lauren Dusick.
L'Oreal Caverly.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is L'Oreal Caverly, and I'm a biologist here, and I've been living in Arcata for about seven years. I want to say that I stand with the We'ot, I stand with the We'ot tribe, and I defer to their position on their sacred land. That is the primary reason that I'm opposed to the Terigen and Energy Capital Partners Wind Farm. Yes, we are facing a huge and scary future with climate change, but that does not mean we should cast aside cultural, botanical, and wildlife destruction for a minor fossil fuel mitigation. I want bladeless wind turbines and in more appropriate locations, and I want a project that is not backed by a fossil fuel extraction corporation. I stand with the We'ot because we are on their stolen land, and the final decision should come from the tribe. Commissioners, please stand with the tribe and vote to reject the permit, the conditional use permit for this project. I do also have a question from the new information that came up earlier, and it's about the decommission. I would like to know what it entails, what's going to happen to the concrete pads, and I think that that information all needs to be fleshed out a lot more before any recommendation can be made by the condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Dan Close, Lauren Dusick, Angelina Lasco.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Dusick, and I'm the co-lead of the North Coast Bat Working Group and a biologist with Stillwater Sciences, and today I'm speaking as a private individual. I would like to comment on the bat section as evaluated in the FEIR. Population level impacts on bats is considered a significant impact under CEQA. And to better assess impacts on bat species and ensure no population level impacts occur, the applicant should, thank you, one, use the mortality models as identified in the 2017 FRIK published paper, and two, incorporate curtailed energy production as part of the initial and ongoing project operations rather than after all else has failed or as needed. Also, further study is needed to assess existing conditions and baseline population numbers on bats. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jack Noonan, Dan Close, Angelina Lasco, Maureen Catalina.
Hello again. I was not expected to do this again, so I have chicken scratch on my paper right now, sorry. So I am very confused with the identify and curtailment because it stated at the last meeting that it was not feasible, and Terigen said that they didn't want to do it because it was not feasible, and the numbers that they presented was completely different than what they presented today. So, you know, I work, I need more time to go over those numbers, I need more time for my brain to understand this. The general plan states in the energy element that self-sufficiency is part of the statement. I don't see that in this project. It also talks about the protection of natural resource and, natural, sorry, protection of cultural resources, and I don't see this project having any kind of protection or enhancement in cultural resources. The decommissioning shouldn't be done by the taxpayers or anybody in California, it should be done by the company that built this. I will be 61 years old when this project is done. I was born and raised in Humboldt County, I will still be here, and I don't want to be the one to have to clean up this mess.
Thank you, Speaker. Be the last call for Jack Noonan or Dan Close? Last call for Dan Close, Jack Noonan? If not, we have Maureen Catalina, Pat Kansler, Jessie Noel, Ellen Taylor. Maureen Catalina?
Yeah.
Pat Kansler, Jessie Noel, Maureen Taylor.
Maureen Catalina, commenting on what was said tonight by Terigen, carbon neutrality? Are you kidding me? 8% of the world's CO2 is created by concrete. What are those turbines made out of? It has nothing to do with your neutrality projections for the coming years. Number two, local? The wind is the only local thing in this project, nothing else is, as far as any benefits to us directly. Money, which is always a big issue with these kind of projects, $50 million over 30 years, I will contribute that along with 66 other residents to this county. No Harm Residents will, will contribute the same amount of money as this destructive project. Mitigation is not feasible, it's a joke. Dogs? Are you kidding me? A plant exchange? Oh, please. Enforcement will never happen, we know that, we know what's enforced in this county, virtually nothing. Terigen has stated that they can't financially even exist if one turbine is down, one. PG&E owns and operates the grid, they're ones that will, are responsible to fix it, not us, we don't need to be bribed, that they will fix something that we don't owe money on anyway.
Please summarize.
Summarizing, no one's mentioned that they can sell this project to any entity in the world. That's who we will be dealing with for the next 30 years, not Terigen, who cares about us so much. Anybody in the world, China, Russia, Saudi Arabia, anybody. It's a sellable product, it's not ours.
Thank you, Speaker. Pat Kansler, Jessie Noel, Ellen Taylor, and I just have the name Roger.
Hi, I'm Pat. I'm not a biologist, I'm not an environmentalist, I'm not an engineer, but I am a nurse. And what you were talking about before, it sounds like drug companies that go before the FDA with their own studies for a medication, and then the FDA approves it, and a few years later, the side effects are insane. So we need independent studies, okay? The other thing I want to say is, you didn't say a word about the We'ot. The We'ot need to be respected in this, it's their land, and like I said before, we screwed around with them for 400 years, let's not do it anymore. Let's respect a culture and a colorful people. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Jessie Noel, Ellen Taylor, Roger, and Ellen Belts. Belts.
Good evening, my name is Jessie Noel, and I cut my contract with RCA on conscientious objectors for reasons. I have two questions that came up relevant to what your staff presented tonight. One is, are the embedded carbon equivalent footprint of the materials, are they in the construction or the operation? And the second is, what number of mating pairs of each species is needed locally here to establish a, or maintain a, a self-sustaining population? Do, I see blank faces, do any of you?
Well, yeah.
Can you tell me the answer?
This is not a question and answer. You make your comment, we, staff can respond to that after public comment, and we can ask that when we get into the discussion stage, but we appreciate your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would prefer that you hold over until they do so. Thank you.
Helen, Ellen Taylor, just the name Roger, Ellen Belts, and Kent Swatzky.
Good evening, I'm Ellen Taylor, and I come from Petrolia. I want to address the issue of carbon neutrality. I fail to see how this project could, could claim carbon neutrality. It may make Humboldt County feel good because it's achieving its goals, or the state of California feel good because it's achieving its goals, but we live in a globe. There, there's nothing that Terigen has ever said, or, or Energy Capital Partners, that they're not going to take the profits they make from here and invest them in their very much more numerous gas and oil exploitative operations. They have not said that, and they, they really haven't even claimed that, that they're going to benefit any other place besides our own abstract standards here. I'm also a healthcare practitioner, and wilderness is good for human health. We need wilderness, we can't nibble away at it with another huge, huge bite. I, I practiced for 32 years, and I, I understand how important it is for our, our own human health. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Roger, Ellen Belts, Kent Swatzky, Hazel James.
Well, for your comfort to know Roger is my full legal name, as it appears on driver's license and everything, so for the record, and I disclose I am from Winnipeg, and I do stand with less use of energy resources flagrantly, but I want to speak to that, I'm more from the ground up, I did not hear staff address the concerns that are very current. I get over 20 calls a day now since the power got a little goofy. I think that people are going off the grid at a rate, just like cell phones, the younger people than I am are going off it so fast, I don't see that wind generators are a part of the future anymore, they're moving parts like big trucks and other things that are not going to be what we use. So, I get that information direct from the, the ground up.
Thank you, Roger. Ellen Belts, Kent Swatzky, Hazel James, Dan Berger.
Thank you again. I wish to comment on the decommissioning bond, and that there is no decommissioning plan in the DEIR or the FEIR, so the question would therefore have to be, how on earth do you establish the value of a bond when you have not yet created the documents which would show you how to decommission the project? That's item number one. Item number two is that the commission was given financials today, this is in line with the rush, rush, rush aspect of this project, and I got to tell you, if a young man came and asked for my daughter's hand in marriage, and we knew it would take two years to do a good wedding, and he wants to deflower her tonight, I would tell him no.
Thank you, Speaker. Kent Swatzky, Hazel James, Dan Berger, Elizabeth Harper Lawson.
Fact, this is not a good project. Fact, I don't think you can make the overriding considerations to go. Fact, I will be taking all my PG&E away from RCA. Fact, I was just told that I could get cheaper energy by buying solar directly through PG&E. I'm encouraging everybody else to follow that. Fact, neither staff nor the applicant ever went to see whether they could have water for this project with the water board. Not a small thing. Fact, basically, it's, a engineer will cover, will, shall cover the work as described, a professional engineer. Fact, that engineer should be overseen by Tom Madsen to see whether he was credible and his estimates were correct, we don't know this. Fact, the financial assurances take form of surety bonds, irrevocable letter of credit, and trust funds, certificates of deposit, or other mechanisms determined acceptable by the planning commission. Fact, he is not capable of determining that. That should be done by somebody who's an expert in these particular things, such as our county auditor or our treasurer. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on these facts today.
Thank you, Speaker. Hazel James, Dan Berger, Elizabeth Harper Lawson, Simone Ranny McGowan.
I'm Hazel James, I'm a citizen of the We'ot tribe, and I also sit on the tribal council. I'm 100% against this project. I've listened to some of the comments, and to me, they're rude and disrespectful to the We'ot tribe. And for, it's, it's a slap in our face. Like, we just got to want back, regardless if five or 10 years it's going to be underwater, so what? It's still ours, it's our fight. We're going to continue fighting. I mean, it's just rude and disrespectful, like, nobody wants to take that in consideration. And for people to say, well, we, we have to adapt to it, put it in your backyard and see if you can adapt to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Dan Berger, please, no applause. Dan Berger, Elizabeth Harper Lawson, Simone Ranny McGowan, Dave Chang.
Hello, thanks for letting me speak. According to your figures, Terigen with 60 turbines would be mitigating 1/3 of 1% of the electrical power in California. That's, the electrical power is about 25% of the CO2 problem, so with 47 turbines, off the top of my head, it's maybe 1/4 of 1%. They said the equivalent of 81,000 cars for one year. I believe California sucks up about a million new cars every year. You're not sitting here determining the future of the human race, you're sitting here determining the future of Humboldt County's prized ridges, like those pictures behind you.
Thank you, Speaker. Elizabeth Harper Lawson, Simone Ranny McGowan, Dave Chang, Nick Zaburn.
Elizabeth Harper Lawson, commissioners, please consider maintaining the sheer beauty of the Bear River Ridge and the Monument Ridge landscape. I was up there two weeks ago, and I just could not believe the stunning beauty. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get it, maybe?
No.
I couldn't get it, because... Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Simone Ranny McGowan, Dave Chang, Nick Zaburn, Isabel Asheroff.
Hello, my name is Simone Ranny McGowan. We've heard over and over again...
We've heard over and over again tonight how much the tribes of this area have rejected and told you how much that this is not okay in their community. As a, to be an integral community means to stand by one another, it has been repetitive in the themes of greenwashing over and over again, and the way this project has perceived itself. It is not accurate and representative of a local community, and it would be a shame to be a part of community that will allow this project to go through. I say that we stand by our integrity, and that to dispel the assumptions that because we are a small community, that we are vulnerable, because we are not, and we will fight you in every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Dave Chang, Nick Zaburn, Isabel Oshirov, Nadalindelap.
Chairman Morris, my name's Dan Close, you called my name earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. First off, there is a proposed project where all these overriding concerns would not, we wouldn't have to mitigate as heavily. The tribe supports, and the environmental community supports, the wind development offshore. It would not destroy significant cultural sites, it would not piss everybody off, and it would, it would go the right direction. This project, I was at a meeting at Founder's Hall, where the technical science people and everybody was there, Nadalindelap didn't show, and she's paid representative, she was not there to hear or speak at the most technical review of this that is today. A lot of the people here were not there. You really only have one choice right now, it's reject or punt the ball. Punt the ball, because I know you're not going to reject. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Nick Zaburn, Isabel Oshirov, Nadalindelap, and Marie Gotti.
Oh, you forgot Dave Chang.
I'm sorry?
I'm Dave Chang.
Go ahead on it, Dave.
I'm Dave Chang, I made the comment last week about the MPDES, county staff went to the Regional Water Control Board, well, they only got half of it right, they did the water source part, the county appears to allow winter work. I got thirty years, over thirty years in the road construction business here, loggers here can't work in the winter, what makes you think Teragen can? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Nick Zaburn.
Good evening, I wanted to reiterate that we should be boycotting this fossil fuel company called Energy Capital Partners if we want to stop global warming. They have shale oil, oil pipelines, gas pipelines, gas and oil infrastructure, coal-powered power, coal-fired power plants, metallurgical coal, they got every kind of fossil fuel you can think of that is creating climate change, and making a deal with the devil if you care about your children and their children, don't buy into this corporate octopus that is creating the exact global warming that we're trying to stop.
Thank you, Speaker. Isabel Oshirov.
Hi, my name is Isabel Oshirov, I'm twenty-three years old, I've lived in Northern California my whole life, I feel the urgency of climate change, I know that we need to act, I think this is a greenwash fall solution to climate change, I don't think this project should go through, I think we should stand with the Weot tribe in opposition to it, and I want to ask the commission, why has there been no assessment of the cumulative impacts of this project, the deforestation associated with it, in conjunction with Humboldt Redwood Company's adjacent timber harvest plans? Is Humboldt Redwood Company going to mill the lumber that is, that comes from the deforestation for this power line? And why isn't there a timber harvest plan for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Nadalindelap.
Good evening, commissioners, Nadalindelap, Eureka resident and Teragen community liaison. I'm here tonight asking for you to approve the Humboldt Wind Project. I have sat in this room, as in, as well as in the Arcata City Council, as the elected officials have grappled with how to deal with sea level rise over Highway 101, and what to do about the Arcata marsh. We cannot deny that climate change is starting to impact us here, and I ask you to remember your obligation to your constituents, and do the best for everyone now and into the future as we try to confront climate change. The Humboldt Wind Project is one tool in your toolbox, along with onshore, offshore wind, biomass, forest protection, and on that, I want to put some into perspective, this project would impact less than one-hundredth of a percent of the Cape Mendocino grasslands, less than one-thousandth of a percent of Humboldt Redwood Company's forests, and the size of the concrete pads equal less than point one-five acres of concrete. Please approve the project tonight.
Thank you, Speaker. Marie Gotti.
My name is Marie Gotti, and I grew up in Southern Humboldt, and I now live in Eureka. I'm here to talk about the decommissioning. First of all, there was, the hugest study that's been done was done by a professor Gordon Hughes, an economist at Edinburgh University, and a former energy user for the World Bank. They discovered that, A, these farms don't last twenty to twenty-five years, which is what most energy companies predict, and Teragen is saying thirty years, they actually last between twelve and fifteen years. They start needing major upgrades, and therefore, their over-the-lifetime benefit is not there. Also, the production decreases twenty-four, from twenty-four percent in the first twelve months of operation to just eleven percent after fifteen years. So, you have to take this into account, and realize that these are going to need to be decommissioned much sooner, and they won't benefit us like Teragen is telling us. Thank you so much. Please, we elected you, please look out for our best interests.
Thank you, Speaker. And this will be the last call for Bonnie Blackberry, Jack Noonan. Last call for Bonnie Blackberry, Jack Noonan. All right, seeing that, then we will bring, let's see, are we going to allow the applicant to?
It'd be normal to allow the applicant to respond, and then to allow staff to respond.
All right. Then, I think we will make the responses outside of public comment.
That'd be fine.
So at this point in time, we will close the public comment section on this, and we will bring it back to the commission for discussion, and so with that, any of the commissioners have any comments, questions, clarifications, looking for some more information? This is the time. Noah?
I'll go first. I would like to, well, first, just because it is a, I keep hearing it talked about, three-acre pads of concrete that are going to be left in perpetuity, can you explain what the decommissioning plan is? Because there is one, I'm pretty sure, I've heard it described in detail, and how big the concrete pads are, let's start with that.
Yeah, I can, I would actually ask the applicant to describe the actual dimensions of the concrete pad, but they are not three acres. Three acres is a developed pad, most of that area is gravel, a very small portion is actually concrete. And so what will happen during, well, first of all, the decommissioning bond is posted at the beginning of the project.
And the bond is posted by the applicant to ensure precisely that the county, the taxpayers are not on the hook for any of the costs of decommissioning, just to be clear.
Yes, yes, that's correct. So the plan would be, you've heard a lot of discussion about the pads stay in place, the pads would stay in place, the same way if you were abandoning a septic system at your property, you generally wouldn't pull that system out completely, you would, you would leave it in because it's very disruptive to remove it at that point, but it would be covered with native soil, the gravel portion would be also decommissioned, so it would all be covered in the end, but the bond would cover all of that. The permit lasts for thirty years, there is a requirement in here that prior to that, two years prior to the expiration, they need to apply to either decommission the project or repower the project. If they wanted to do something different sooner than that, they would also need to apply for a permit, just as they have now, and come forth with that proposal. So decommissioning will require permitting, and it will be evaluated at that time.
I'd also just like to add, the top portion of the concrete pad, and I think it's fifty feet.
I've been told they're between fifteen and twenty-five feet in diameter, is that correct? I'd just like to get a firm answer on that.
Nathan Vodas, the applicant for Teragen and Humboldt Wind LLC, you're, every turbine foundation is designed according to the site-specific conditions, as referenced there, we're well aware of the seismic conditions, potential. Generally speaking, though, they are an octagon shape, sixty foot in diameter, meaning thirty-foot radius, the types of foundations that this would support, based upon our preliminary investigations, would support a, about a nine-to-ten-foot-deep pad of concrete, it's got a rebar anchor cage built upon a three-inch, what's called a mud mat, and so generally speaking, it's a sixty-foot in diameter, so sixty-foot across, it's an octagon shape, think of a circle effectively, with squared-off edges, and it's about nine feet deep, if you go between eight and nine feet, as a middle-of-the-road example.
Thank you, that does, about the dimensions, because I had heard somewhat different numbers thrown around, so, yeah.
And the only, as Planning Director Ford mentioned, the, only the top pedestal, the portion where the actual tower, the base tower section sits, only about a foot and a half to three foot of that exists above grade, meaning above the soil condition, the soil itself.
So that's the portion that would be removed at the time of decommissioning? That top portion above grade, or?
Yes.
Yes, and then native soil placed on it, revegetated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Wait, was that, did that, yeah.
Would it be fair, staff, to say that the, this, we, decommissioning plan would be very similar to the reclamation plan that most gravel extraction plants face, and so that's a relatively common thing that staff enforces and oversees?
I think that would be fair to say, yes. I would just say, one of the things that I think people may be dissatisfied with is not having that plan right now, but one of the reasons for not having the plan now and requiring the plan to be developed in the future is that it will take into account the circumstances that exist in the future. And so, we don't know what the environmental circumstances will be thirty years from now, and it gives the planning commission at that time the ability to take a look at the circumstances and to approve the decommissioning plan at that time.
Thank you.
But just, but I just want to be clear that while the precise details of how it is done, you're saying that those will be determined in the future, but there's a bottom-line requirement of decommissioning, so the plan that we just heard described, I guess, where, where does that fit in?
So that is part of the project description right now. And so that would be a baseline consideration for the future decommissioning plan and what would be reviewed and approved. But there will be considerations depending on what the condition of the forest is, other things that may be there, endangered species, what may be listed at that time that may need to be taken into consideration, how that's addressed. It's really those very important considerations that need to be considered in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Is this decommissioning plan, is, when it is in the future, put together, is that strictly a county endeavor, or is that a partnership with Water Quality, Fish and Game, the county, how does that work?
It'll be very much a partnership.
So there are like consulting referral agencies that you go out with and ask for their approval?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more?
Yes.
On a different topic, actually. One of the things that is new, just a few days ago, is the requirement of an all-species bird technical advisory committee. And relevant to that, and to some of the comments tonight, the BAT TAC, Technical Advisory Committee. You know, someone who spoke tonight, who I've had great respect for, for twenty years or more, Michael Evanson, had a line where he said, "Don't let Teragen make these a science project." And while I remain deeply conflicted on whether I want these to be there, I actually believe that one of the benefits of this project, as it has evolved, as I understand it, if we can really cement some of the mitigation measures that have been developed for this project that have never been used before, are the generation of good data, and the appointment of a technical advisory committee composed of independent scientific experts, using consultation with HSU, ultimately delivering recommendations to the committee, I mean, to the county, to make decisions about what mitigations need to be done. Now, I, I know, I could be totally naive, that these scientists, that their recommendations will somehow make it through the county, to the owner, to the operators, to implement effective mitigations, but what I like, and I would like to see it strengthened even more, about this bird tac and this bat tac, is that it would, first of all, not just look at listed species, it would look at all species of birds that are being impacted, it would, the scientists would insist on developing rigorous monitoring methods, and we heard something about them, dogs, absence of evidence, and so forth, to really try to get the best data we can about what is happening around these turbines, and the effect of that would not just be, I hope, to minimize, not eliminate, but to minimize or reduce the mortality of wildlife here, but to actually raise the bar for what would be done at other wind projects, because we need to have wind projects all over the place. I mean, I personally do not believe we can avert the climate crisis without industrial-scale energy, whether it's here, whether it's somewhere else, some people say put it somewhere else, there's going to be more and more wind projects going on in the next twenty years, and this could set a standard that could be adopted by others to create a feedback loop between the data that we collect, and the mitigations that are designed, and how well do they work, and adaptive management principles to shift. So, sorry, you just.
No.
Oh.
Sorry, I was not.
Okay, sorry, I thought it was something to do with, but that said, I just wanted to maybe have a little bit more discussion, if people haven't had a chance to read about it, about, about how this tac would work, who it would consist of, what the role of the agencies, right, what the role of the agencies would be, and that was just a couple of points that I wanted to say. I would really like to see the, the role of California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the US Fish and Wildlife Service strengthened and underscored in the composition of this tac, of these two tacs. I would like to be assured that the public will get access to the mortality monitoring reports, and to the recommendations of the tac to the operators. Those are a couple of points that may or may not be specified in the language, I know the language is new, but I thought it was a chance for the staff to describe a little bit more what they're envisioning for these technical advisory committees.
If I could, thank you, Commissioner Levy, that, actually, I hope to demonstrate here in a moment that a lot of the things that you have been brought up are envisioned and thought about within the bird tac, and in fact, it is not a science project that would be of the applicant's doing, it is an independent group that would be formed, and the core constituency would be CDFW and US Fish and Wildlife Service, other academics, other people in the research field, and the bird tac in particular is not limited to special status species. It does say particularly special status species, but it does not limit it to special status species. And the importance of that is because the benefit of the bird tac is it does give the ability to look at the monitoring data and determine if there's anything going on that isn't anticipated, and gives that scientific community then the opportunity to talk about that, and to envision what may need to be done in response to that. I would say, maybe, one of the things that confused some of the public tonight is that suddenly, the applicant saying, "Well, now we can do these things that previously we said that they can't do," and that's really not the applicant's doing, that's And that's really not the applicant's doing, that's staff having worked that language into the mitigation measure to offer those as alternatives down the road if it's necessary to incorporate some kind of operational change that Identifite or something like that would be implemented in order to do that. Identifite, really, for clarity, is only associated with eagles at this point. As I understand it, it's only used on two wind farms, and it's on an experimental basis right now, so it's not something that is, is, been demonstrated successful at this point. In terms of the, the public access to the information, this is all on the public record. So, these would not be, this information would come into the county, it would be the recommendation of, of the, the TAC, but basically, it's structured in such a way that that's not something that the county's going to overrule and ignore the recommendation or, or the, what the experts feel. It's really using the county's discretion and authority, in this particular case, to make sure the mitigation is implemented. So that is all very much part of the, the, the public record. I, I think that, you know, the idea of TAC is something that's new. I, I, I don't want to necessarily say that we're doing something great and outstanding here, but we, we have struggled to raise the bar and, and cut new ground, and the TACs, I think, are part of that. Creating a TAC for an unlisted species to begin with is, is unusual. And so both the BAT-TAC and the Bird TAC are TACs that normally a TAC would be related to protected species, but there, that's not how this is being deployed. So, it's a pretty bold step.
You may have, you may have covered this earlier on, but I, it didn't buy me if you did. How do you believe that the appointing or the formation of the TAC would occur? Is that strictly going to be a, a county-led effort, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think the, kind of, coming directly out of the gate, there are two seats on the TAC that are reserved, and that is CDFW and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And, and then, after that, it, the way it's been envisioned is, is to create it similar to what we do with the surface mining, the CHIR committee, and, and to really form it in the same way as a, a panel of experts that are formed, that are appointed, and then serve as a part of that. And there, there would be a vetting process. We obviously want academics, we want researchers, we want people who are experienced in the field. We want people to have different frames of reference to come at this from, because healthy dialogue produces better results. Thank you.
And, and we're just asking questions right now, right?
We're in discussion, we're in the discussion phase.
Okay. And, just tagging on there with my understanding with what the report from staff says is committee of at least three and no more than seven, so it'll be an odd number so that things can get done and it won't be deadlocked on things. So, I, I like that. I want to know a little bit more about the decommissioning bond, how that would be figured out for a value.
So, basically, what we would look at, at this point, is what would it take to remove the material that's been installed on-site? What would it take to restore the site today? And then to look at the cost of that, that would be based on an engineer's estimate, that's something that's commonly done. That will, we are anticipating that if this project were to be approved, that we would hire an outside firm to do the, the plan check for the building permits and things like that, that would include the appropriate technical expertise to be able to do that. And so that engineering estimate would be reviewed by them. And then it would be given a level of review, also to include what would be the future cost be with inflation. And, and then, th- those are the factors that would be used to determine the decommissioning bond. We, as Ms. Burks also mentioned today, we wanted to add language in there to address the potentiality that if the site, for whatever reason, were to be abandoned, that there would be timeframes in which, if the site were not operated, that then the operator would be responsible to be moving towards doing a, a reclamation plan, or the county would then initiate that work and, and obtain that bond.
Melanie?
I have a, a question regarding what stage we're in. I, I, it was my understanding just a few moments ago that it was going to go to the applicant and then staff, and then to our deliberations?
It was, it was to, we are in discussion, and in that discussion, we can query staff, we can query the applicants, we can discuss amongst ourselves.
Okay, because I, I, I have a lot of comments, but I don't have any questions for the applicant or the staff, and so I'd just like to know if I should save my...
This would be the venue to do that in.
To move to deliberations?
Yes, yep.
Oh.
This, discussion deliberations, I, I use those as interchangeable terms.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. So I've spent nearly my whole life studying and to the best possible practicing sustainability and trying to maintain biological diversity, or biodiversity, as E.O. Wilson coined the term. I have several degrees, biology, environmental impact assessment, forest biology. Moved here in 2014. There were some adaptations required. I love it here now. I love the environment here. And I take my role in the community and in the public process very seriously. And on that note, I, I noticed that there were a lot of misunderstandings out there in terms of our role. And so firstly, I just wanted to say that we are, in fact, not elected. Two of us, myself included, I guess are quasi-elected in the sense that we're elected by the supervisors as a whole. The other commissioners are appointed by, appointed by their supervisor. And, so I'd just like to make that clear, because I think a lot of the public kind of misunderstands that. We are... In addition to that, I'd just like to make another comment about the public process itself. The Planning Department is responsible for the planning here in Humboldt County. Our role is really a review role and a recommendation role. And yes, we do make decisions, they are ultimately contestable to the supervisors. So I just wanted to put that out there, because I, I did feel that there were a lot of comments where there was some misunderstanding there. Another thing I'd like to say is that I think that all of us who live here in Humboldt County by choice, or most of us, rather, live here because we really appreciate living in a beautiful, clean environment, close to the tribes. And I do really believe that. And I feel that this project has unfortunately kind of pitted a lot of us-like-minded Humboldt County residents against each other, when really we're all looking out for the same thing. And so I just wanted to say that, too, that we don't really want to be like the rest of the country and get into really acrimonious partisanship, and instead, look at everything on the basis of the evidence that we have in hand. And that's what I do. Like many of us, I, I have solar panels, it's one of the first things that I did when I moved here. It wasn't that expensive. I'm not off-grid. I drive a Nissan Leaf. It has almost zero maintenance. It's a couple of dollars to fill it up, so to speak. And I do think that there is a lot of room for that here. And I, we heard from quite a few solar installers that that is the way people are going. Having said that, I do take climate change very seriously. I've seen it, I'm originally from Canada, I have relatives in Nunavut. The climate changes, we hear about two degrees, three degrees, those are averages. And it's not even a large climate change in terms of our climate history. What it is, is a rapid climate change. And so our real concern here is, with this rapid climate change, which we don't have data on, is will we be able to adapt in situ? Or will we be able to migrate? And by "we" I'm including all plants and animals. And so that is the real question with the climate changes that we're seeing. And people in the north understand that, and like I said, the two-to-three degrees is an average. Up there, it could be as much as 10 degrees. So I agree, we do need to act. We need to change the way we live, the way we consume energy. It's for this reason that I, again, did not take a partisan stance against policies that I believe are beneficial to the environment by our current president. I fully support the Energy Independence Act. It makes us accountable for our own consumption of energy, produces it here in our own country, where it undergoes at least some sort of EIA process, rather than being produced in another country for us, where there is no EIA process. Likewise, many of the trade tariffs are beneficial to the environment, and it doesn't matter who put those through. So, it's just a bit of context for this question, which has really come down to, for a lot of people, climate change mitigation versus biological diversity maintenance. And so before I make further comments about that, I would like to say that, first of all, this project should never have been proposed on ridges considered sacred by our local tribes. That is the first reason as to why this is the right project in the wrong location. When I first saw the project, I really wanted to love it. The environmentally preferred alternative at the time was to not put any turbines on Bear River Ridge. That is no longer the case. And because of all of the research that I have done, I am no longer in favor of putting them on Monument Ridge either. As many of you know, I am rather familiar with the SEQA, and I do value the framework it does provide. It is flawed as well. One of the flaws is a lack of a life-cycle approach. And that is where we look at everything that went into the project, cradle to grave, so to speak. For example, the concrete, sand is indeed one of the world's so-called resources that is most impacted right now. And not many people are aware of this, but we're actually running out of sand, we're mining sand, we're mining sand in California. So the lack of life-cycle approach is one of the flaws under the SEQA. And, so for that reason, I won't spend a lot of time on this, many, many studies that show that if you take a life-cycle analysis, wind energy projects, even in good locations, don't always pencil out. Under the SEQA, one of the most important things you have to consider is the environmental setting, even more so than under the NEPA or the SEA. The environmental setting is emphasized because the SEQA rightly pointed out that two identical projects in two different locations produce vastly different effects, some of which may be significant impacts. The environmental setting also provides the baseline information. And so, when we're looking at, for example, the environmental setting, we have to acknowledge that any lessons learned from a scientific point of view, I've done a fair bit of this in my career, I am in fact a scientific researcher, the lessons, the information we would get from this so-called science project is applicable only to the environmental setting which it's in, which is here, on those ridges in Humboldt County. A place where the international community would be appalled to see them. The idea that we are pulling up plants and offering them to the tribes is embarrassing. I mean, it's, it's, it's shameful. It's insulting. In terms of the biological mitigations, as I've just mentioned, the so-called science project wouldn't be very useful unless we planned to put a whole lot more here in similar locations. And I don't think that we'll be doing that, I think the world is changing, and that's not the direction we're going. In addition, these turbines are old-style turbines, old models. They're not the way of the future. Finally, on that point, we've heard from most of the biologists in our community. And so I would ask, who's going to be on this advisory committee? Most of the biologists in our community are against the project. They're not going to want to willingly participate in a project that they fundamentally see as flawed. Moving to some of the other biological impacts. Thinning forests. And I know that this is controversial here, too. Thinning forests is one thing. Thinning forests, if done properly and in the right locations and for the right reasons, can be beneficial for a forest. It releases certain trees to grow more, to store more carbon. Importantly, the soil, which contains 90% of all biodiversity, remains there, largely unaffected. The trees continue to grow and sequester more carbon. Removal of an entire forest is something else entirely. Removal of an entire forest is something else entirely. That disruption of the soil and removal of the soil carbon and all of the forest communities and soil communities removes a massive amount of carbon that has not been calculated and is not required to. And I will acknowledge that once again. I think I may have mentioned before that I worked as the International Chair of the North American Pollinator Protection Campaign for many years. That has been overlooked in the EIR. There's no mention, for example, of how herbicide is to be applied. Is it to be sprayed everywhere? So-called broadcast spraying? That's extremely harmful for the environment. Mostly, other places are now banning that. Backpack spraying is something that we endorsed because as most of us know, been involved in agriculture or farming, often some level of that is required for certain conditions and crops. But there are methods, and none of them were mentioned. Likewise, the invertebrates that are killed, very little time was spent on that in the EIR. And I would like to bring to your attention an article that was published in a very good journal, a well-respected journal. If you are, have a science background, you'll be familiar with Nature, no doubt. Insects can have wind turbine power for no apparent reason. The power of wind turbines operating in high winds may drop, causing production losses of up to 25%. The study found that insect kill was predominantly responsible for up to a 25% loss in production. And I do want to point out that we do unfortunately live in a very partisan environment. On topics of health, I often look to China, Canada, places where there's a universal healthcare program where it's in the business of keeping people healthy, because that saves money. Here, we're not in that business, right? And so we're in the business of making money. The same thing goes for this industry. And so I started researching journals like Nature and others that are looking at it from the engineering point of view. And this one was July 5th, 2001, and another one in 2010, published by engineers who were not at all interested or, to be honest, concerned that insects, many of whom are pollinators, were accumulating on the blades in such high numbers that the production went down by 25%. But rather just that they wanted to know why their production was down by 25%. And so, little trick, if you're ever doing some research, is to think about who else might be interested in these questions and why. And you get the full picture. So I am concerned that the herbicide application, in terms of the methodology, was not addressed. And the invertebrates themselves and the pollinators also not addressed. Last week, I reached out to someone I know at the David Suzuki Foundation. I don't know if anyone's familiar with the David Suzuki Foundation. It's probably the most well-known climate and biodiversity, environmental foundation in Canada. And Theresa Beer gave me the permission to read this. "Thanks for reaching out. You raise important questions that we at the David Suzuki Foundation are also grappling with. In fact, in Canada, there is now an alliance forming that includes those working on renewable energy and those working in conservation. They are considering nature values and where and how renewable projects are cited. While we support the deployment of more wind, solar, and other renewables, and they really do, we recognize the importance of doing this in a way that, one, accounts for indigenous rights, in particular, those articulated in the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. It sounds like the project you are describing may fall short here. The need to respect indigenous rights was one of the main reasons we did not support the development of a large hydroelectric dam project in B.C.'s Peace Region known as the Site-C Dam. We are facing the twin crises of biodiversity extinction and climate breakdown. Trading off less of the first for more of the second doesn't seem to be an effective long-term strategy. I'm afraid we can't offer particular analysis of the project you described due to our lack of capacity to research or comment on individual international projects. I do, however, hope that this provides some context for how we approach these challenging issues." I've had many people write me, former colleagues, former professors, Germany, Montreal, all of whom say the same thing. "You will make the international news for trying to put a wind, an old-style wind farm on sacred ridges in the world's only temperate redwood rainforest? Is that really what we want to do? I don't think so. In fact, I know we don't want to do that. There are other options. It's not worth trading in cultural resource values and biodiversity for what is a tiny, tiny dent in, let's face it, Southern California's excessive consumption of carbon. Why would we cite this in one of the world's most unique environments and ecosystems? It just, if you look at it from a global perspective, it, it sounds honestly not just insulting, but crazy. For those of us who do get pessimistic, one of my former professors, Dr. Yalkanyager, sent me a graph that every effort we make has been making a huge difference. So we don't have to do absolutely everything. We don't have to grab at terrible projects just to make a tiny extra dent in the climate crisis mitigation. We are making progress. I can share the diagram with anyone who'd like to see it. It's really uplifting. We've made incredible progress, and we will. But as the Suzuki Foundation said, and of almost everybody internationally would say, you don't want to trade in biological diversity for a tiny dent in carbon in one of the world's most unique sites. And I would also like to point out that we recently made Scotia an historical site. And there's an economic, this project is economically not even that viable. And there's an entire industry and so much potential. And land, all of the Avenue of the Giants, the Redwood Forest, people don't come here to see that sort of project. So I have a lot of studies. I could probably talk about this for a long time. I can sense that maybe some of the other commissioners are maybe waiting for their turn to speak. So I will finish with pointing out that we are signatories to the United Nations Declaration on Indigenous Rights. When it was first proposed in 2007, there were four countries that abstained. Australia, Canada, New Zealand, and the United States. In 2010, Obama finally agreed to it in principle. In 2015, 16, Prime Minister Justin Trudeau did the same. This is not a project that would be okay under this United Nations Declaration that we are part of. Or under the North American Free Trade Agreement Commission on Environmental Cooperation. There are several submissions on enforcement matters open right now for energy projects in our three countries that address some of the issues in this project. Finally, the Rio Declaration on the Environment. Those of you who've taken my class on EIA are probably familiar with Principle 17. Talk about it a lot. It's the one that required all countries to have an EIA process. Not all do yet. It's been a while. Principle 15 is, "In order to protect the environment, the precautionary approach shall be widely applied by states according to their capabilities. Where there are threats of serious or irreversible damage, lack of full scientific certainty shall not be used as a reason for postponing cost-effective measures to prevent environmental degradation." This can be applied to many projects in many different ways. But the way it is most often applied is if we don't know what the impacts are, but they look to be very large in terms of biological diversity in this case, we should wait and look for better options. And so for the reasons that I've outlined, putting a wind farm on sacred ridges, number one. Two, trading in biological diversity in our ecosystem for energy. And three, the clear issues in the EIR, there are quite a few areas where there's lacking information. I'm not willing to approve this project. And I'm not willing to certify the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, you have comments?
Thank you, Melanie.
That's a tough act to follow. So I don't want to butt heads with my colleagues, especially one that I have as much respect for as Melanie. But I'm going to give you a little bit more of the Humboldt perspective from my perspective. I lived here, third generation. I've lived here and I've watched, since I was old enough to pay attention, every project that's come to this town get denied. I'll throw one out if somebody can think of one that got approved, but, and I'll, I'll say I'm wrong, but I've...
The nuclear plant!
Calm down, please. We're trying to have it, we're trying to have...
I shouldn't have said that. I apologize. But the point I'm making is everything pretty much gets said no to. So I'm not saying that everything is right about this project. But I think I, with all we talk about, about the environment and everything, I think that I'm persuaded to go with it, I'll be honest. One thing, the, the only project I do say that we've done here is cannabis. And I, and I look at that and I go, well, the amount of ecological devastation that's happened because of all those grows out there is far, far worse than what I could possibly see this doing. And I spend a lot of time out in the country, and I know what's going on out there. I think something that hasn't been spoke about a lot, but it's something that our county has tried to do from time to time, and that's to keep big tracts of, of land together. And I think that, I think it was on the second night, one of the, the speakers, and he's one of the landowners, Lane Russ, brought it up. And, you know, I think he's looking forward. I, I, I see what he's doing. He's kind of the, looking at what his family is fifth-generation on this land and what they're going to do in the future. Because if they don't figure out some way to make that land viable, it's going to get broke up. It's going to, he said it, just as simple as can be. It's going to look like the eastern part of the county. And it's going to get broken up, and it's probably going to be in cannabis. And maybe that's what we want in Humboldt County. It's not what I, I see. I've been not really strong on the cannabis all along. But that may be where we're headed. But I see him looking forward and working with a company to do something that is going to keep this land intact. And I think that if we let it go the other way, you're just, you, you, along with splitting all that up, you get all the environmental problems come with that, more roads, more everything. So I think you need to look at the big picture for Humboldt County. We say no to everything. It's time to give something a try. And I know, I keep hearing that we got to wait for the, the ocean wind project. I keep hearing about it, but I haven't seen much about it. And we probably should do that one too. But I think that this is a good start to get our feet in the, in the water, let's say. And, and that we got to try something, because what we've been doing isn't working.
I was going to ask a few more questions, because there was a few questions asked with a public comment that I was interested in. I didn't write them down. But there was a few that I noticed staff writing down for those answers. Could you bring those out a moment? I think it was mainly, I'm trying to remember exactly, because I didn't write it down. I thought we were going to talk about it a little bit before we got into the discussion here.
So two of the questions that I wrote down were, in terms of embedded carbon, was that calculated for construction or just operation? And I would anticipate that the model included both. In terms of how many mating pairs are needed to maintain a self-sustaining population? The, going to look at Susan and see if she could do a better job of answering that than I could.
Nobody's going to provide information on the number of mating pairs needed to sustain a population of a rare or a not-rare species. But what the TAC would do is take experts... But what the TAC would do is take experts on those species of concern, apply what is known about the current science on minimizing impacts on wildlife from wind energy, and apply their knowledge of population dynamics, demographics, trends, and what's known about how to, how to keep populations from going on a trajectory of decline. That's what the TAC would do. And you'll never have that information. You'll never know, unless condors maybe, but you'll not know how many mating pairs are needed. It's just, the TACs would provide the kind of expertise you need to answer those sorts of questions.
I think one of the other questions revolve around water.
So we did hear that there may be a concern with the use of the water from the plant run by HRC. And so we did contact the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And we've given you a copy of the letter that they wrote today. But we also had a conversation with them and asked them what it was that they thought was possible, what was feasible. And one of, the number one question that was asked is, are they in a position where they're thinking that this water, this, the processed water cannot ever be used for this project? And that was not their conclusion. Their conclusion and concern was is that they haven't thought about this yet. But in terms of allowing the water to be used, as long as it's used in compliance with normal standards for release of water, they have no problem with that. And the condition that we're recommending to you tonight is actually a condition that they gave us. This is what they asked for.
You have any questions for me?
No, no more questions. I, I do look at this on an overview too, much more than trying to look at minutia of things. I know that the city of Eureka, as well as Blue Lake and Verndale and Fortuna, Riedel, the Redwood Coast Energy Authority has put in their plans, their general plans, that we need clean and renewable electricity by 2025. I know that the population as a whole is not trying to cut down their electricity use as much as it can be done with conservation. So we need to try and do as much as we can to have alternative energy here to do our part. We can't just say, just do it over there because it would spoil a look shed or a view shed, I should say. I hear NIMBYism in that. Just don't do it here. You can do it over there. I, I think we need to do our part on renewable energy. And I think this is a project that can help on that. I don't agree with everything on this. There are some points here that I don't like. But with all projects, there are always concerns in everything. So given everything that has been said and, and the reason that I've seen with the moving target, so to speak, is, is that the applicant has been very accommodating to help alleviate some of the concerns and, and questions that have come up. And some of those just can't be mitigated against, but some have, and they've, they've worked to reduce those. And I know that part of this decommissioning and, and the setting up of the, the turbines themselves will have to do with where the placement is on each one. And that's more of a moving project at the same time, so we won't have concrete numbers all the way down for each of those forty-seven sites. And that's why it'll continue to evolve and come before the planning department. I'm not going to drone on with other things. I see the following benefits that this wind project will do with our local electricity grid. It'll get us on the path of more self-reliance. I've looked at a variety of things that were supplied to us, as well as I've talked to neighbors and friends and other people that don't normally come out to these things, or even send emails or letters. And they're asking me, why, you know, what's the big to do about this? We need renewable energy. And this is solar energy, or not solar, it's wind energy. Solar is another thing that more people can jump on, and we've been hearing that more and more. And I'm in fact going to start looking at that even more so now after these power shut-offs that we've been affected with. Because I like having a refrigerator that keeps my food cold and is ready and able to prepare food that's fresh. I'll leave it at that at this point.
Melanie, you have another comment?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick comments. One thing I wanted to point out was at one point the applicant was emphasizing that they are not PG&E. They are not. But PG&E subcontracts all of their maintenance work here, or most of it. And they're often to local groups. And so the same thing would occur with this group. I mean, unless they plan on coming up themselves to maintain the, the grid. So I just wanted to make that point. The fire hazard will become ever greater, and there was really no attempt to make that calculation. We are, of course, every year, look, it looks like it's getting drier. Our predictions are not infallible, but that's what it looks like. And to be fair, the applicant is relying on said climate data. So that's another point. That the offshore won't be able to meet a hundred percent renewable by 2025. It shouldn't be about an arbitrary date at any cost. That is not what our progressive state was after when they put through these ambitious greenhouse gas reduction goals. And then finally, the solar installation. At some point, it was mentioned, I believe, by the applicant that if it's eleven thousand dollars per household and, you know, most of Humboldt County is low income, then what's going to happen? Well, I've looked at the demographics and I use them in the classes I give. And most low-income Humboldt County residents don't own the place they live in. They rent. And that's another omission in the dialogue. The landlords can afford to put that in. The rents are very high in this county. And so it's not really a defensible argument to say that it can't happen because we have too many low-income households. A lot of those households don't own the house that they live in. That's, that's all for now. Thanks.
I'd like to say something. I don't, I do not support this project. I've sat here and listened to the community that is probably going to be the most impacted by this project, tell us over and over again that they don't want it for very good reasons. I don't need to go through all the reasons why I don't support it, but I don't understand how we can sit here and say, well, you're going to have to have it anyway, just because, you know, it makes me feel good that I'm doing something. If the community doesn't want the project, then we shouldn't be moving forward with the project. I think that we should, you know, I've sat here thinking of all the things that I should be doing that I'm not doing, and I do a lot, but to help the environment. And I think maybe this has been a good thing because we can move forward and all look for alternatives. I do support the offshore wind project, and I do think it's going to happen. And I think that the community can make it happen if we all get together. We can do more conservation. We can do more renewables on a local level. If we were going to do this project and we were going to accept all the negative impacts, it should be a local project. It should be something that we would be benefiting and reducing our energy. It is not going to reduce our energy, and it's not necessarily going to keep the power on when PG&E decides to turn the grid off. It's, it's not going to work. And I, maybe we all think it is for the wrong reasons, those that, that want to approve it. They think it's going to solve all of these problems that it's not going to solve. And I don't believe that we should bring outsiders in here to do a project. If it's a good project, we could get the financing local. And I don't think we should do it so the county can get tax money. I think we should save our forest. I think, you know, I read something, and I'm not a big bird person, but I read that there's over four hundred and seventy species of birds in Humboldt County or that pass through Humboldt County. And I know I work down in Lolita, and I'd see the big wild geese formations going through, and they would be heading right for these wind turbines after they passed over Lolita, if those turbines had been there. But that's thirty percent of our bird species have already declined since the nineteen seventies. And here we are with one of the most diverse bird populations. There's only twelve other places it said in, in the United States that has the, the bird populations that we have here in this county. And we're just going to do an experiment to get rid of them? I don't want to be a part of that, you know, and I, I don't accept that there, you can't mitigate. And maybe you can't mitigate on this project because it's just not the project to do. But I'm not going to sit here and force people that live one mile away from these turbines or live in Scotia. Scotia's already experienced bringing in an outside investment firm, and what did they do and what did they leave? We had the whole headwaters problem. So we already know what it's, how this is going to turn out. I don't think I have to leave, live thirty more years to tell you what I think's going to happen. I'm not going to vote for this project. And I think that, for one, it wouldn't be, even if it was a project that we were thinking about doing in the future, but I don't think there's anything you can do to make this a good project. Tonight is not the night to vote for it because this environmental, I've, I've had to do environmentals, and this is not the environmental. It seems like it's, I don't want to go into what I really think about it, but I don't think it's, it's done. Let's put it that way. That's all I got to say.
First, I want to thank all of you all who have come out here three times for many, many hours. And I know there's a lot more who we don't even see, except when we go out to the bathroom. I see you, Dan. What I wanted to say is, well, start by quoting a couple of things that, that you guys have said. Someone who I didn't know personally said early in the meeting, "The role of government should be to do the greatest good for the greatest number." Or the greatest part of the community. Forget his exact phrase. I, I hope you know that each of us up here is trying to do that and live up to that standard. This is not a job you take for the glory or the power, and certainly not for the profit. Whoever mentioned something about profit. This is an unpaid position, just so you know. What really spoke to me was some words from someone else I have known and respected for twenty years or so in the Metol, David Simpson. And he said, "Look into your hearts. Which course of action will you regret the least?" And so I feel the need to preface it with his wise words when I say to you all, I think anyone who thinks this is an easy call is missing something. It doesn't mean that you're wrong to advocate for the position that you take, and everyone here has advocated for one position or another. I appreciate that many of you, in the course of the last three times, have said something to the effect of, you know, you've got a way trying to achieve this against trying to protect that, trying to not make these people unhappy, but trying to make other people happy. And of course, trying to follow the law as we interpret the law as it applies to this case. So I mean, you can say what you want. It is a free country. I believe in free speech, but, but I would appreciate recognizing that, you know, if it was as simple as some people seem to think it is, then how could smart people feel very differently about it, you know? People who really do care about this community, the environment, the birds, the bats, the planets. The planet, not the planets. And, and, you know, frankly, Melanie, I, I feel the need to direct that comment a bit to you. I, you know, you, you did some informative homework behind this project, but I, I think you also vastly oversimplify the arguments in favor of one direction over the other. So I felt a little bit insulted by sort of making it out as if this would just be stupid for anyone to support this. There, there are strong arguments on both sides. One of them is what Alan said. We talk about standing with the Wiat, protecting this sacred ridge. Bear River Ridge is a gorgeous coastal prairie. I've been up there a number of times. I've driven that road many times. I've also spent quite a bit of time on Monument Ridge. Monument Ridge is, is a heavily managed industrial forest land owned by a company who has recently had their management practices take a major turn for the worse. And some of you in this room might know that. Okay? Bear River Ridge is largely owned, at least the prairie part, by the Rust family who have had it for many generations. The Wiat haven't had access to that prairie for about a hundred and fifty years, as I understand it, which is not to say that they shouldn't care about it, which is not to say that their opinion about what happens there shouldn't matter a great deal. But the fact of the matter is, if we say no to this project, that doesn't protect Bear River Ridge for the Wiat. It doesn't. And in fact, it might make it more likely that it gets carved up into a bunch of small cannabis plantations. Or subdivisions.
Calm, calm down, calm down, calm down.
But we don't have the power in this decision tonight to make the Rust family do anything. Nor do we have the power to make people drive less, turn out the lights sooner, get an electric car, or put solar panels on their house. We don't have that power.
All right, calm down. We're, we're not in a discussion with the audience. We're here to make our, our comments and our discussion.
I'm so what I'm saying here is that I, I think people who think this is a simple, easy call and do the right thing can only mean one thing, are missing something. I would like us to imagine for a moment that in fact, we would go to the tribal council of every tribe where any project, that means not just a wind turbine, but your house, your farm, your ranch, your timber operations, go to them and say, can we do this project here? And let them decide. And if they say yes, we can do it. And if they say no, we can't. It, it appeals to a certain sense of emotional justice. It certainly recognizes the incredible historic wrong that has been done to them. But is that actually how you think our planning process should go going forward? Because if so, we don't actually need a planning department. We don't need a planning commission. We just need to ask the tribes if they approve. Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of taking this to its logical conclusion. And fair enough, that, that was, I guess, a well-earned applause, or, so, I, yeah. Yeah. I'm just saying that it's not that easy. And so I am, I don't want to go on...
You took a helicopter ride.
Right. I took a helicopter ride. So, well, listen, I'm sorry that I inspire that kind of hostility. Anyway, I will stop talking and let somebody else talk.
Melanie, you have a quick comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to that. I, you know, I took a lot of care to point out that this debate is being argued on the international stage. And I referenced very well-respected scientists and international organizations. And I have done a lot of research. And I don't think it's fair to call it homework. That is something that we've seen all too often. That's a way of discounting people's work. And what I had laid out was a very clear argument, climate versus biodiversity, and why it shouldn't be so. As to your statement that I made anyone who might have a different opinion feel stupid, I was also very clear about that, that I don't think that anyone dislikes the ecosystem here. And that we do all have more shared values than we have values that differ. But when it comes to respecting sacred ridges and looking at the evidence, the facts in this particular case, where we're looking at a tiny amount of energy and sacrificing so much that internationally, yes, it would be seen as very foolish, especially in light of the UN Declaration of Indigenous Rights.
Well, everyone else has weighed in, so I suppose I should weigh in. The, I've lived in Humboldt County for 70 years. My lineage goes back to the Metol Indians. My great-great-grandfather was John Cathy, for which Cathy Peak in the Petrollia area or Honeydew area was named. So I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot of changes in Humboldt County since I've been here. And I think that Melanie made a very impassioned presentation. And, well, there's a lot of stuff that she said that I probably can't disagree with. I do think we need to recognize that a lot of the ideas and comments that Commissioner McCarver made deal with policy. We are not policymakers. Policymakers are the board of supervisors. What we do here in these chambers is we look at project specifics. When we determine whether or not those projects comply and conform with county land use plans, which is in this case would be the general plan, does it conform with local rules, regulations, does it conform with state law? That is our initial mission. We are not policymakers. Once we decide, once we decide and we're looking at the specifics, we look at that and we say, or at least I say to myself, are there any safety or public health concerns with this project? If it conforms to everything else, those are where I believe we have the attitude of making exceptions. The general plan, which is the underlying land use document of the county, went through almost an 18-year genesis for its 2.0 creation. And during that 18-year period, these chambers were filled, just like they are tonight. We heard time after time after time all of the different permutations about what Humboldt County should look like in the future, what Humboldt County should do in this area. And we came up and we have a general plan that went into effect a little over a year ago. That is the overriding framework in which we make our land decisions. And so, it's not no, it's accept. And the, you know, I kind of find it a little ironic that today we're talking about electricity, we're talking about climate change, we're talking about what direction we should go when there is a pressing problem out there. Today is a power shut-off red flag day in the interior. It's not hitting Humboldt County, but it's hitting other areas. And so, you know, we had, we experienced our power, a power shut-off here a week or two ago. My, I have some relatives over in the valley, and I believe they have had 11 days of power shut-off so far this year. And that's very disruptive, whether you're a family, whether you're a business, whether your kids go to school. And so I think something needs to be done. Can it be done in one fell swoop? No, it can't be done in one fell swoop. I do believe that there are merits with this project that are taking and can take an incremental step into perhaps making Humboldt County a microgrid island. I believe there was some information put out early on in the comment period. In fact, I think some of it may even be one of the draft EIR where the, the cost is at this point in time prohibitive for a bankrupt PG&E to take on. To me, that behooves us, if we can make an incremental step in fixing some of the transmission lines, upgrading some of the substations, somewhere down the road, when there is monies available, the communities of Humboldt may be able to be an island, a microgrid island. I think that is a positive step. The, the issue of the Wiat tribal lands, to me, comes down to the point where, is this project more detrimental to the Wiat traditional tribal lands? Or is fragmentation of the landscape more detrimental? Right now, the two lands upon which this project is going to be placed are owned by two large landowners. One of them is a timber company, and that timber company has a habitat conservation plan on it. That habitat conservation plan is overseen by the forestry department, the water quality department, and the fishing game department. There are performance standards that that timber company needs to adhere to. The other landowner has a sterling record of land stewardship, probably one of the largest historic landowners in the county. And I've watched a lot of this area go from a dynamic agricultural-based industry into decline. When I was a young man, sheep were the primary agricultural animal in the county. You drove through Petrollia, Honeydew, Garberville, Bloxburg, Bridgeville, it was a rarity to see a cow. You saw sheep. That was the backbone. Sheep went out with the banning of strychnine, and the ranchers switched over to cattle. Those that had cattle and a little timber, most of them are still here. Those that had strictly cattle are probably no longer here. And so what you have is a landowner base that needs to supplement their agricultural production with another steady stream of income. And I think, based on the testimony of the Russ family, that's what they're looking for. If they don't get that, it gets harder and harder to hang on to this ground, and thus the likelihood of fragmentation occurs. Fragmentation can happen real easy on these big ranches. You can look at the Petrollia-Metol area, and that happened because of certificates of compliance. The certificate of compliance is the result of a court action and a court determination. And there's not a whole lot that the county or local planning departments can do to overturn the court's decision on certificates of compliance. And so fragmentation is a real big problem. And I believe that the Wiat's are much better served by keeping these areas in large ownerships rather than taking the tact that what they want to do is to have nothing happening out there, because if nothing happens, the landowners can't remain financially viable, I believe you will see fragmentation. And I would hate to see fragmentation in this, in these areas. The, the state also has come out with some very ambitious goals, but they are forward-looking goals. And the fact that we're in a power shut-off today, you know, to me, adds to the validity that these forward-looking goals need to be addressed. This project, in my opinion, is a step in the right direction. Will it solve everything? It won't solve it in one fell swoop, but it is a step. And I think that's how we get places, are little steps at a time. And so the overriding, the overriding community benefits to this, I believe, are significant. Stabilizing tax assessment is a positive for all county residents. When you can have a little bit more surety that taxes are available for roads, for schools, for law enforcement, that is a positive to the community. Is there a detriment to some of the biodiversity that we have? Yes, there is. I believe that CEQA, and I believe that the final EIR on this addresses those. And, well, I'm not 100% satisfied that this is going to 100% solve everything. It is a giant step in the right direction, and because of that, I would support the project.
I just want to get on again. First of all, Melanie, I apologize for calling you out inappropriately. I didn't, I didn't mean to say it the way I did, and I didn't mean to criticize you. But what I did mean to say is that I think it's a misstatement to say or to imply that the consensus of all scientists, environmentalists, and biologists in this community is against this project. That I do believe. I've spoken to many, many people. I myself, like you, have a long background in the field. I've worked for 20 years in land conservation, ecological restoration, environmental law, and advocacy. I still serve on the board of EPIC, and EPIC is literally being torn apart in its members, in its board, by what the position should be on this project. So again, if you look through the comments that we've received in writing, you see a much more divided set of views. If you talk to random people in the community, you find it is even more divided. You all, however, have distinguished yourselves by caring enough to show up and stay for hours and speak passionately and do a lot of research. And I didn't mean to be demeaning by saying homework, Melanie. I would have said the same thing about my own homework that I did. But the point is, the people in this room have done a lot of research, a lot of homework. I've learned stuff. And I will be honest, you've changed my views. I've pushed back against some of what I hear people say because I think you oversimplify some things. Some people do. And that was my point in my earlier comment. But you have changed my views, and you have made me concerned about some things more deeply than I had been. And fundamentally, even if I might lean barely towards thinking that it's better to do this project than to not do it, I have to say, despite the good-natured heckling, that I am moved by the passion of the people who have showed up. I am finding it increasingly hard to do what I thought I would end up doing, which is to vote to approve this when we have heard person after person after person. I mean, I've been up here for five years on this commission. I've never seen this kind of turnout. I've never seen the signs, the installation in the hall. Like, it's good stuff. So I don't agree with all of you, but I do have to acknowledge that it's hard to go ahead and overrule that kind of passion and commitment. But the other thing that I am feeling about this tonight is that this has been coming fast and heavy in terms of the amount of information and documentation that we have to absorb, you know, and that you all do. I know that the staff and the applicant are working their ass off to develop answers to questions, to develop alternatives to what was proposed earlier. But it is a problem. I see it as a real problem that, that stuff that is quite substantial is coming to us literally just like today when we got here. I know that's not how anyone wanted it to be. But as some of you have said, it's hard to, you know, realistically look you, look each other in the eye and say, "You're voting to, you know, make these..." look each other in the eye and say, you're voting to, you know, make these, you know, findings of overriding consideration using materials that, that we literally just got. I do find that quite problematic. I, I demur on the question of, I mean, I think there are flaws with the environmental document. I don't think those flaws are as extensive as some have claimed. I, I do feel a duty that we need to proceed at a pace and in a way that protects the county from litigation, or rather, that sets up the county to be well-prepared to defend itself in litigation, to defend what we ultimately decide. I don't think anyone, well, I, I don't think litigation can be stopped. I think it will come probably regardless, or certainly regard, if the project goes through, it will be sued over. I'm not so certain if it, the other way would be, but big projects often bring litigation. I think it's really important that the county be as well-prepared as it can be to handle that. And I, I, I fear a little bit that, that by pushing things right up to the limit of the speed at which they can be carefully, accurately accomplished in that sort of work, we might be undermining ourselves in the future. So just wanted to put that out there.
Any other comments? Mike?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to make all the required findings based on the evidence in the staff report, and after receiving public testimony, certify the environmental impact report, adopt statements of overriding considerations for the indicated project, adopt findings that the project is consistent with applicable policies and regulations, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and approve the project as revised in the FEIR, subject to the conditions of approval.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion? Is anyone, everyone clear on the motion? Need this be a roll call vote, Director, since it's a certification of the EIR?
It doesn't need to be a roll call vote. You can, if you'd like.
We will make it a roll call vote.
Actually, sorry. Discussion of the motion. Could I have a little discussion?
We can back up, but we can have discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there anyone else up here who might prefer, although we are being asked not to, to at least consider continuing this two weeks out so that we can more fully digest the final versions of the staff description, the resolution, conditions and so forth, and furthermore allow for our seventh colleague to be up here?
I think we've gone a long ways down the road, Noah, and I would certainly not be in favor of continuing this. Any further discussion on the motion? Have a roll call, please. Vote.
Commissioner Levy.
I'm afraid I'm a no.
Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Morris.
Aye.
Commissioner Bongio.
Aye.
Commissioner McCaver.
No.
Commissioner O'Neil.
No.
Thank you.
The motion does not pass. It's three to three. Is there any other derivation of the motion that we might come up with? Any changes, mitigations? Does staff have an alternative resolution?
I think one of the questions we would ask is there anything that could be done to modify the project at this point that may change one or more of the votes? Otherwise, an alternative motion could be to consider denial of the project.
Is not a three-three a denial of the project?
No, three-three only means that the motion has failed. So what the commission needs to do tonight is find a motion that will successfully pass. So in order to actually deny a project, you have to make a motion to deny, and we do have an alternative resolution available for you, for your consideration, that would allow you to recommend denial of the project and then to vote on that. And if that is successful, then the action would be to deny.
I, we probably should hear from the applicant on that because I believe he stated something earlier that he'd rather have that latter than a tie. Is that true?
Please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Again, thank you for your time, your, your unbiased consideration. Yes, we'd like a clear yes or no vote tonight. That's our request. If there are additional considerations, it would afford any of the planning commissioners' ability to change their.
Oh, Mike. Must've run out of juice. No electricity.
Bear with us a moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, we, we would strongly request a, a clear up or down vote in the event one of the planning commissioners might have additional measures that would change their opinion. We'd, we'd request that, we'd like, we'd request a strongly a clear up or down vote. Thank you.
Then I'm, I might ask, I'll ask the commissioners one by one, who wants their voting, no, is there, is there Commissioner O'Neil, is there anything that could be changed or modified in this project that would get your vote? Commissioner McCarver?
No.
Noah, is there anything in here that could be changed, modified, that would get you to change your vote?
I might have been prepared to vote yes with a continuance. It was more that I felt I couldn't, I couldn't do it yet. I hadn't, I hadn't absorbed all the latest material, and I do feel that there has been some meaningful improvement each time we have had the chance to digest the new stuff and make modifications to it. So can I ask you, as the applicant, how would that, how would that strike you guys? We could make it a clear no vote tonight, or we could push it back another two or three weeks.
Well, so to answer your question, we would, we'd like a, a clear up or down vote. At the same time, I would, in your infinite wisdom and experience, I believe, you know, many of the commission members have been on the commission for a long time, I would surmise you would not be surprised that anyone would oppose this project, would provide information at a last minute, thereby causing you to doubt your vote. And I would respectfully say that's intentional.
Fair. How is Ronnie?
And so, again, I defer to your strong experience, but I, we're asking for a clear up and yes or no vote.
Calm down, please. We're having the discussion. Okay. Thank you. Well, is anyone prepared to make another motion?
So, Director, you said there was an alternative.
So we have a resolution here that would basically find that there are too many significant adverse impacts associated with the project for which there are insufficient findings of overriding consideration to approve. It would be just a very simple no based upon that fact.
Can make a motion?
We have such a motion? Do we have a second?
Does that include the?
It would be the resolution.
It would be that the.
Excuse me?
If I may address the, the planning commission?
No, not now.
Yeah. Yeah.
I motion to deny the Humboldt Wind LLC conditional use permit and special permit case number PLN 13999-COP, application number 13999, with assessor parcel numbers 102132004000 through 205341019, to not accept the statement of overriding considerations and to not certify the EIR.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second? Any discussion on the motion? I would ask the clerk to roll call, please.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Newman.
No.
Commissioner Morris.
No.
Commissioner Bongio. Commissioner McCaver?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the, the motion passes. The project is denied. And with that, we're back to the rest of the agenda. And I believe that, that concludes our agendized items, and the next meeting is on which date?
It will be December 5th, and that we will go back to our regular meeting time at 6:00.
Okay. So the next meeting will be December 5th, regular time, 6:00, and with that, we will adjourn the 21st meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission.